This time I'll call this meeting to order and we'll ask the clerk to call the role of the board, please.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Present.
Commissioner Askew.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz.
Present.
Thank you for that, all members are present. We do have, like I say, a lengthy agenda tonight, about two and a half pages, but even with all those items, we do have a couple of additional items that we do need to add to the agenda tonight, and we will just add these, we'll just add these right above the departmental statistics for November, and there were copies of these, there's about 10 copies of these items we're adding, but it's also on the website as pending additional items. We do have an intergovernmental agreement between Walker County Water and Sewer Authority and Walker County Government that the board will take action on tonight, and also some paving to pave three of our parking lots, one being the DFAX building, one being parking lot, and one being our Ag Center parking lot, both of those in Rock Springs, and then also our new election office that we're working on here in Lafitte, so we have proposals for that. So I'd like to make the motion that we modify the agenda by adding those two action items, being the intergovernmental agreement proposal from Tally Construction, so I'll make that in the form of a motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
Take it.
Have a second, but Commissioner Hart, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved with those modifications. We do have our minutes from our prior meeting back here on November the 14th, 2024, and what I'm gonna do tonight, too, a little bit different, there's so many things here that's gotta be signed tonight, you can see all the tabs on this thing, so I'm just gonna wait and sign everything at the end of the meeting, just in essence of time. So we do have these minutes, is there any modifications that the board has to the minutes?
No, sir.
All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented by the clerk?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Say it.
Second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. All right, the next thing we have tonight is we have a proclamation that we'd like to read in recognition of a special person in our community, proclamation by the Walker County Board of Commissioners, appreciation for Charles Wardlaw, whereas after graduating from high school, Charles Wardlaw worked for 12 years with the Georgia State Highway Department, serving as a project engineer, whereas Wardlaw left the State Highway Department in 1970 to start his own private land surveying business, and whereas upon resignation of Jack Kinsley as Walker County Surveyor, probate Judge W.L. Abney appointed Wardlaw to serve the remaining two years of Kinsley's term, September 22nd, 1970, and whereas Wardlaw was elected to the surveyor's position on November the 7th, 1972, and re-elected 12 additional terms, and whereas Wardlaw has performed numerous surveys in his position, including boundary line surveys, topographical surveys, and construction surveys. Therefore, I, Shannon Kay Whitfield, on behalf of the Walker County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize and congratulate Charles Wardlaw for his 54 years of distinguished service to our community, and urge all citizens to extend their appreciation to Mr. Wardlaw as he prepares for his next endeavors. Signed and sealed the 19th day of December 2024. Let's give Mr. Wardlaw a hand, please.
Mr. Chair, I think our chair would like to add one more accolade to his resume.
Okay, Chair, would you like to come up?
I did a little research over the last couple of weeks across the state of Georgia, and I've reached out to county officials in each branch of government, and I've not been able to find anyone in the state of Georgia that is currently exceeding Charles's 54 years of service as a county elected official.
Wow.
And so I say this, that I believe through my research, that he currently is the longest-serving county official in any capacity in the state of Georgia.
Wow. Mr. Charles Wardlaw, we'd like to present you with this proclamation, and also this plaque, Lifetime Achievement, presented to Charles Wardlaw, and grateful appreciation for 54 years of service, Walker County, Georgia. Thank you. Is there other family here? Come on, come on, if you wanna come right up here, we'll let you stand right here beside him and hold that, okay? Come on down, just wait just a little bit, get everybody in, here we go, we can come on down a little more. Come on down just a little bit more, we'll get everybody in. What do you think about that, Joe?
All right, I can get it. Everybody look this way, you ready? Three, two, one.
Give Charles another hand. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, sir, thank you so much.
Thank you. 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 Thank you, sir. A lot of heels, yeah. That's right, 43 years.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll let them transition out, and we did free up some seats here on the front row, if any of y'all in the peanut gallery wanna come forward, there's seating, plenty of seats up here on the front, if y'all wanna come on up, you can do so at this time, if any of y'all that wanna come on up. Okay, while we're doing exciting things, we have a presentation from our Community Connection Connectivity Plan from Shannon Millsaps in Virginia with Thrive Regional Partners, so Shannon, come on up, I love your first name, so come on up.
We're twins, or something like that.
We'll let you have the floor.
I appreciate it so much, I did bring you guys, I know there's no screen, but just some copies of a couple of talking points, although you do have access to 149-page connectivity plan now, it's not a 300-page agenda.
It is part of the agenda.
You're welcome for those 300 pages, then, for 149 pages. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here today, I'm Shannon Millsaps, COO with Thrive Regional Partnership. Some of you are familiar with the work we do, we are a nonprofit, our headquarters is based in Chattanooga, we work across 16 counties, including here in Walker, five across Northwest Georgia, so we're thrilled to be here and thrilled to be a part of this. I was asked just to come and speak a little bit about some of the things that we found, some of the recommendations that you'll see in the plan itself, and then I wanna share a couple of things, we already have some history making tonight, so I wanna share some other cool things with you that put Walker County ahead of a lot of the state of Georgia regarding this kinda work. So first and foremost, I'll touch on the purpose behind this plan, I was telling my team, too, and I'll introduce them as well, Virginia Pettit from our team is a project coordinator, anyone who might be in the room that participated or contributed to this plan probably talked to Virginia or myself, as well as Michelle Smith in the back of the room standing there, she's our data and research analyst, really responsible for a lot of what you see, diagnosing and analyzing the data that we were able to pull together. But this really started, Shannon, it was you and I and Bridget, our CEO, that talked about a year, just over a year ago, he said, "We've got this grant now, we gotta figure out where is the access, where's not the access, and what's happening in Walker County." And so with that, we were able to partner with Connect Humanity, who's the funder of this program, and be the local on-the-ground support to get this plan completed. The purpose, I'll read to you, since all of you haven't seen it potentially, but it's also in your packet there, the purpose behind this plan, the purpose statement, if you will, "Walker County recognizes that connectivity is essential for all residents to participate in the workforce, to have access to public health care, engage in community resources, support agriculture, connect with emergency response services, and provide educational opportunities." I think there's no doubt that Walker County is like much of Georgia and much of our region as a whole, in that where access does exist, there's still reasons why people may not be accessing, whether it's reliability, affordability, nervousness about cybersecurity and privacy, all of those things ring true here, but just to share a couple of those numbers, what we did find is that there's still 16% of Walker County residents without any internet access, 16%. I'll throw a couple of other numbers out there real quick, and then we'll be conscious of your time, 40% of households with incomes less than $20,000 have no internet subscription. So even if the access is there, fiber, DSL, cable, satellite, even if there is an option, 40% of those low-income households that are making less than $20,000 a year don't have a subscription because they have more important things to pay for, right, gas, food, childcare, those things. Over 17% of Walker County residents are reliant on a wireless solution, so that's your cellphone, that's data from your phone, that's a satellite service. In doing this plan and in talking with community members, we heard of some residents who have multiple providers, just to be able to conduct business, right? We heard about a gentleman who gets up in the middle of the night to do the financial transactions for his small business because he can't rely on his internet during the day. We heard about another woman who moved from Chattanooga in the Gig City, right, and came across the state line and is living here and has two services because she can't keep her family, her children, on at the same time, so she has a land service as well as satellite to supplement that. Those are stories that we're hearing from residents. And then we know that there are 10 providers, more than 10 providers, based on the FCC data, that actually are providing service in Walker County. So all of this feeds into the understanding together, right, of how much internet access is out there, why aren't people accessing it, and then what do we need to do, what can the county do to begin to move towards solutions to make sure that everyone has access? So in your packet there, I apologize about the print got weird, some of those implementation strategies, really the primary recommendation that came out of this planning process was the ability to create a Director of Community Development, a Director of Broadband, some role that is dedicated within Walker County Government, to further assess and help develop a roadmap. We really see this kind of as the compass, right, you think about navigation, this can provide a compass, and this is meant to be a living, breathing document, so all of that to say, those 149 pages could shrink or grow depending on what's happening day-to-day in the funding that's available. But the objectives ultimately are to expand broadband service and device access, so not only do you need the internet at your home, but you may need something more than your cellphone to access that. It's very hard to apply for a job and submit a PDF and do all of those things on your cellphone, right? Another objective is digital literacy programs and supporting community tech hubs through community centers, the accessibility of public resources and services, being able to understand what's happening in your community, the awareness of and education of cybersecurity and best practices around online privacy tools, and then the really key part around public-private partnership, and allowing the county to have a tool to go to those ISPs and say, "Here's where we're seeing a lack of access, here's where we wanna see some investment in the community." And really, the point behind this plan, in a lot of ways, was to set Walker County up for success, because you've probably heard there's a lot of federal money out there, right, that's coming into the community, but in order to utilize some of those dollars, and in fact, the state is prioritizing communities that have plans in place. So I just double-checked yesterday, the only county outside of Walker County and Whitfield County, who is your neighbor to the east and someone we also helped create a community connectivity plan for, Walker and Whitfield will become number two and number three in the entire state of Georgia to have a community connectivity plan. The state of Georgia has said that they are prioritizing the federal money that they have, and will first go to and offer those applications to communities that have plans in place, and have done the work to understand what is the reality on the ground. So thrilled to say that the only other county in Georgia right now that has a local plan like this is Clayton County. Walker County will become number two and Whitfield County number three, as they also seek to adopt the connectivity plan and make paths forward. I will finish by saying a big thank you, you'll see this in the plan itself, but a lot of people contributed to this plan from your community, everyone from Walker County Schools to Northwest Georgia Tech, Georgia Northwest, the YMCA, the Cherokee Regional Library System, Lisa Eubanks and her team are doing incredible work, and others, and so we couldn't have done this plan without you, this was not our plan, it was Walker County's plan, we were just thrilled to be able to be a local agency on the ground supporting it. And ultimately, as we think about, how does this set you up, we know that, you may have seen an announcement last week, Thrive has just recently received a grant through the Appalachian Regional Commission, ARC helped fund this program in order to help us do this plan. What's really exciting, and what ARC is really excited about, is the continuity between that plan, and now they've given us dollars to be able to go out and implement some of these things in Walker County, like Tech Goes Home programming and digital skills training, helping people get the skills they need, and then the devices and the computers walking away from that to be able to better themselves and live very viably in this increasingly digital society. So let me just say thank you, thank the county, we are thrilled to be a part of this work, we're thrilled to continue to support in any way we can, Thrive's not going anywhere, but the plan is here, it is not static, it will live and breathe, is my understanding, and will continue to grow, and we're just really thrilled, and I can't say enough about Joe and DeKaya and Chairman Whitfield and your team for really helping us get the access that we needed to put this together for you all. And with that, I'll just say we're around, my team is here, we'll scoot out in a bit, but I'm always available, if anybody wants to dig into that plan, please reach out to us, I'd be happy to explain anything that we found and how, and with that, unless there are any questions, I will bid you adieu.
Does any of the board members have any questions?
Thank you.
Kudos to you all, really, second in the state.
Y'all have done an amazing job partnering, and I do also wanna mention that Joe and his assistant, DeKaya, and all of y'all have really collaborated well together, have done a lot of work, and I've read the entire plan, and it's very enlightening of the information that's there and things that y'all have uncovered and been able to document, so thank you for partnering with us and for your team and all the hard work that y'all have done, we're very thankful for that.
Yeah, we're happy to do it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a public hearing tonight on ordinance O-0125 to amend Chapter 34 utilities of the Code of Walker County to adopt a broadband-ready community standards, that is part of this process that we were doing with our connectivity plan, is we have to have an ordinance in place, and so this is part of the agenda packet, and at this time, if there's anyone that would like to come and speak in regards to this ordinance, any questions, comments, input, something we've missed, something that we need to reconsider, this would be the time for you to come and give input to the board and to the staff of things that may need to be modified before this is brought back at another time for final approval and implementation into our Code of Ordinance. So is there anyone at this time that would like to speak, only on this ordinance at this time? Okay, hearing none, and you can also, if there's anybody at home watching, or anybody picks this up on YouTube later, you can email information as well to Walker County, or send letters, or come by the office, and we'd love to talk to you more about this. Okay, the next item that we have is a public hearing for planning and zoning items, and we have several tonight, first one we have is Hawks Ridge Holding LLC requests a partial rezon from C1 Commercial to a PUD, which is a planned unit development, for property located at 180 Hutchinson Drive/104 Quarter Street, Rossville, Georgia 30741, tax map impartial number 0-119-002 and 002A. Is there anyone here tonight that wants to speak in opposition to this zoning request? Any opposition? Yes, ma'am. We will limit your comments to five minutes, and you'll need to limit your comments just to this topic, please.
Very short.
Please state your name.
Melissa Holsey, I would just like to ask this board to please respect what Planning and Zoning did by denying this, I think they did their homework on this one, and they did an excellent job, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this ordinance in opposition? Okay, would the applicant like to speak at this time?
Sure.
Okay, we'll also have you, five minutes just due to the length of our agenda tonight, and please state your name.
Okay, point of order, I'm on the, I'm on, I'm sorry, I'm sick, I'm on the agenda twice?
The approval process will come at the end, that's why it's on there twice.
And the new business set, so that's where you'll vote on it?
Yes.
Okay. Ben Hayman, I'm the developer of Hawks Ridge and Hawks Ridge Holdings, and applied for this. When we originally went to the planning commission, we proposed 32 lots, and since then, we've kinda amended our plan a little bit from working with you guys, and it's now at 21 lots, and we've left the front of it still commercial, we've still got the front corner that's commercial, and in addition to that, originally our PUD was approved for 550 units, this'll top it out right around 450-ish, and it'll be the end of the development. Beyond that, if you go to the west side of the property, we've taken, by suggestion of Walker County, we've taken about 10 acres up there, and we're gonna turn it into green space that can't be built on, it's gonna back up to the entire back of the subdivision, so there'll always be about a 10-acre buffer there that's shown up. So from working with you guys, we've left another commercial corner, when you come in, a smaller commercial corner, we've still got our large commercial corner, who we have somebody interested in, and then we have, and then as you go on back the road, instead of having lots that front the road, you get pretty deep back in there, I think it's 200 and something feet, and that's where your 21 lots end up starting, so we've reduced it by 11. Overall, it reduces the development down from 550 to 450-ish, I don't have the exact number on me, but it's close, so it's a lower amount of lots, and still protecting more green space.
Does any board member have a question for Mr. Hayman?
So this drawing in our package is what you're proposing, Ben, is that correct? Can you see that?
I can't see that far, sorry.
I think you do, I just wanted to.
I think so, bro, yeah, with the commercial.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's your newly revamped.
Yes, so this hatched part right here is the green space?
Yes, ma'am.
And then this is the offset where everything starts, and this is the, that stays commercial, that stays commercial, and then there's a pine back there. Yes, yes, that's correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Hayman? No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that wants to speak on this topic, either for or against this rezon request? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the next one. Next one we have is RL Wooten requests a rezon from A1 Agricultural to C1 Commercial for property located at 6560 Highway 151, Lafitte, Georgia 30728, tax map impartial number 0-156-012A. Anyone that wants to speak in opposition of this one? Any opposition on Highway 151? All right, hearing none, is the applicant here tonight? Yes, would y'all like to speak, it's your option, you can speak or not?
Way up.
You'll need to come to the podium if you'd like to speak, though.
I'm gonna lay.
That'd be fine, you can come up, sir, just work your way up, and... When you get up to the podium, if you would just state your name for the record, you have up to five minutes.
I'm Bobby Blakemore, and what is, I'm looking at purchasing the property from RL, and there's been businesses there for a while, you know, hadn't been one there for a while, but there was an insulation company there, I think Guy Yates had a towing company out of there for a while, and I just, I wanna be an archer up here, and I was just gonna purchase it from him and keep my business in Walker County, so.
Okay, does any of the board members have any questions? No, sir. Okay, thank you. Anyone else on this one, either for or against this one on Highway 151? Yes, sir, please state your.
Abby Holsey, I'm not speaking specifically on that topic, but all in general, how do you set yourself up to approve or disapprove of minutes that haven't been approved by the Planning and Zoning yet? These are tentative until the minutes are voted to be approved from the previous meeting.
Well, they were just part of the packet as the draft, and they're marked draft, but since...
No, approved minutes, as we saw with the shooting range, or shooting sporting play with Macklemore, there was discrepancy in the minutes.
Well, we're not talking about Macklemore, this is only on this item, and when we get to public comments, if you wanna come back, but this is only about this.
Okay, on this one.
Just on this.
The minutes on this one was not approved yet in the following Planning and Zoning meeting, so how do you take this upon yourselves when the minutes weren't approved yet by the Planning and Zoning? These are the minutes of the initial meeting, not approved minutes as y'all do on the next meeting, so how do you take action on the minutes that are not approved yet? I'm just asking, I'm just curious.
And what he's getting at is typically, the planning commission meets the third Thursday of every month, then we meet the fourth Thursday, so normally, their minutes have been reviewed and approved, but so since we didn't wanna come in and have a meeting the day after Christmas, we moved our meeting up a week.
And I don't believe it's, normally they are approved before y'all see them, I think you see the initial meeting with the minutes taken, before the minutes are approved by Planning and Zoning, that you take action on the minutes from Planning and Zoning. So that's not true that normally they're approved before they come here, so I'm just curious how you approve something or disapprove on minutes that are not approved by Planning and Zoning yet. So I think it's out of order, and I think it ought to be in order, I agree with accurate minutes, as I told Planning and Zoning, your meetings and votes are only as good as the minutes recorded what happened at that meeting, so I think it ought to be in more order, maybe the next administration will have these in order, where you're looking at approved minutes that everybody's votes on, so they're approved before you take them, so that's all I wanna make, but yeah, this topic, this one, and others.
Thank you. Anyone else on this zoning for Highway 151? We'll move to the next. Okay, the next item that we have is C-Rock City care of Doug Chapin requests a rezon from R1 Residential to C1 Commercial for property located at 0 Highway 157 Lookout Mountain, Georgia 30750, tax map impartial number 0-044-001. Anyone here to speak in opposition?
It was tabled from the planning board, it'll be heard again in January.
Okay, so is there anyone that came here tonight to speak on it since it was advertised? This one had been tabled by the planning.
This Ned Yates, I don't understand why Rock City wants this property, from what I looked at, I spent six hours last night, I've been tied up, but I spent over six hours trying to figure out what the devil this commission is doing tonight, but it wasn't clear at all what Rock City plans to do with this that I could find in the agenda, it may be in there, but it doesn't make sense, so how in the world can y'all even have it on the agenda when planning commission has tabled it, and y'all have considered it, doesn't make good sense.
Once we get to that on the agenda, there'll probably be a motion to table it, since it's not been through planning, but since it was advertised, in case somebody wanted to speak on it, we give anyone the opportunity to speak on it, but it will come back up. Anyone else on Rock City? All right, hearing none, we'll move to the next one, Kelly Lee Griffin and Paige Griffin requests a rezon from R2 Residential to C1 Commercial for property located at 3404 North Highway 27, Lafitte, Georgia 30728, tax map impartial number 0-322-4-003. Anyone in opposition of this one? Any opposition? All right, hearing none, is the applicant here tonight? You still have the option to speak if you'd like, but you need to please come to the podium, if you would please, and once you get to...
I don't need to speak, I just want to have a rezon.
Well, just wait so everybody at home can hear you, and state your name, we'll give you the floor.
I just need it to rezon, we're trying to...
Please state your name.
My name's Paige Griffin, Kelly is my sister.
Okay.
We're trying to sell the property, and everybody that has been interested in it wants it zoned back to commercial, so that's why we're doing this.
Okay, board member have any questions for Ms. Griffin?
This is the property where the old Pine Motel was, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Griffin? All right, here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the next one we have is a request from Randall Dalton, requests a variance for property located at 1,061 North Highway 27, Rock Springs, Georgia, 30739, tax map impartial number 0-325-026. Any opposition to this request for a variance? All right, hearing none, is anyone here, is the applicant here or anyone representing the applicant that would like to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward.
This is for Dollar General Store.
Please state your name.
I'm sorry, Bobby Howard, 93 Molly Place, Dadeville, Alabama. This is for Dollar General Store. We requested this numerous times from y'all and y'all have been gracious to approve it. The reason to do it is Dollar General just doesn't need that much parking and they will have plenty of adequate parking, but your codes are written so that it would require a good bit more than what they need. Why have that much asphalt, that much runoff? There is a little savings when we don't do that asphalt and in this situation, we were able to convince Dollar General to let us upgrade. This is right on your, this is across the street from your civic center, kind of on a main street and we had to petition Dollar General to get approval from them to upgrade the building. So this will look like a building that is on Garrett Chapel Road at 301.
341.
341. It'll look very similar to that. The rent and everything, our business deal with them is based on the cost of the building, so Dollar General generally wants that metal building and lower stuff. There are times and situations where we can plead to them to let us do more and they were gracious enough to do that, to agree to that here.
Very good. Board have any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in regard to that variance request for the parking? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to our agenda. This is our time of our public comments where anyone can come up and speak to the board and to the staff that's here. We do ask you to speak your name for the record. We do request that you keep your topics of conversation focused on things that we can have a positive impact on or that we can address because you only have five minutes, so we just recommend you use it wisely. So who would like to speak first? Yeah, Mr. Yates? Please state your name.
Ned Yates, I'll apologize to start with, I'm probably a little disorganized tonight. My employer for over 100 years has closed their business, so a lot to do, but I did spend six hours, over six hours last night trying to read this agenda, this book, and I read a lot and it, I had a hard time. I want to wish y'all and everybody, all the citizens of Walker County Merry Christmas. First thing is I'm concerned with trying to go to a meeting of once a month. I think it's poorly reasoned out. My opinion, it fails to use common wisdom of human nature and that means procrastination. You know, we're going to have twice the topics, we got 20 tonight, twice the topics. You get three days for the citizens to figure out what in the devil is going on because y'all don't tell anybody and they've got to get public, open records and open records generally takes three days and it comes out on Friday and the meeting's on Thursday. That's a little bit difficult. An example of just some things that don't seem to come up with talking about open documents, September 12th, there was an unanimous decision to give $2.4 million a year away to Macklemore. There's still documents that are not forthcoming. Apparently, my understanding is one of the commissioners even said that one of the studies done, he didn't read it, it was 600 plus pages, it was a couple inches thick, he didn't read it. It was one of the things they based. Nobody knows where that document is. That's funny. To me, it's a little bit tragic. You get decreased transparency if you have one meeting, you know, it's a part-time job for y'all, except for you Shannon, and y'all all do, y'all work hard, I know that, but you're going to double the load for each time and you're basically by doubling the amount of time here for cutting in half, you're going to double your salary. That doesn't make good sense. You know, when you get twice the topics, 20 tonight, you're going to be interrupted by the citizens that may know something that'll cause you to decrease your focus on the items you're looking at. The next thing, I didn't even look, oh, good. The next thing is spay, castrate or microchip your animals. Six months for dogs, four months for cats. The citizens got to supply proof of documentation. I always was taught in school in civics that you're innocent until proven guilty. That seems to me to be poorly written, it seems to be unconstitutional in the way it's written. So you're going to send the animal shelter to stopo to see if they like the documents that you have to prove your innocence. You know, what happens when you got, well, it's not my dog. The dog's laying in my barn, he's got five pups. It's not my dog. Well, whose fault is it? And you're going to find them? That doesn't make good sense. There's containment ornament now, ornament. We're not Christmas, no Christmas trees here. Containment ordinance now, I always heard it was a leash law, but a containment ornament, can't say it. Containment anyway, that's not enforced now. My understanding, we've got two staff that does that. They can't enforce that. How are we going to enforce this unless we hire more people, spend more money? There's exemptions for vets can give exemption only for the duration of a medical event or a working animal. That's the only two things. The fees are determined by the animal shelter and y'all approve that. That does not seem like that's much transparency. You're innocent until proven guilty, but the way this ordinance is written, it appears it's not that way. You prove yourself innocent, but you're guilty until you prove yourself innocent. And y'all, once again, y'all have a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Who would like to be next? Yes, sir, the red hat. Please state your name.
Sean Lawler. You know, kind of piggyback to what Ned was saying right there is, you know, I look at the agenda on Facebook and going through the Facebook agenda and everything, it wasn't near as much as it was out to be, this huge agenda, it was only certain parts of it and I only call it the only what he was talking about today with the Walker County messenger about going to a proposed one meeting a month. I didn't see that anywhere on the Facebook thing. It was just, to me, it's just like highlights of what the proposed agenda is going to be or whatever. But, you know, going forward, you know, one thing I want to note to say is, you know, with today not being your last commission meeting, Mr. Whitfield, you've done a lot of good things for Walker County. A lot of people don't underestimate what he came into. He came into a freaking nightmare. A lot of people don't agree with his policies that he's had in the last eight years that he's ran Walker County. A lot of, I don't, you know, we got, we got a gentleman comes here, I see all the time, he's been talking about since forever ago about the proposed almost getting Walker County sued with the hawk or the big thing that happened at Ridge on the apartments over there when they were trying to go to a county management, which I'm glad we didn't go to because that would have put Walker County in another detrimental thing, going into a whole new thing like that. We were in debt, he came in and he cleaned it up. He gave us, if you read today's article, Walker County's messenger, you know, I didn't realize that, but we, when he came into office, we were, we were on the bank, we were a bankrupt county when he came in and I don't think people realize how detrimental that would be for Walker County and where we would be today. I think the main thing, you know, is in my opinion, it was just disconnect with community. A lot of people come to these meetings and they talk about, you know, things for animal control, you know, I think there's more things to worry about in animal control, you know, that's one thing, but all the time, you always hear about animal control in Walker County. Why in the world, I mean, we always talk about this when there's other things that need to be taken care of in Walker County. Yes, that is a problem, you know, there's other things in this, in this thing that we need to be fixing, but, you know, one thing is, you know, I think it's, back to Ned Yates, is we don't need to go to a one county commit or one meeting thing because so much things are going on so fast and things, so that's all I got to say, but thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Holsey? Please state your name, please.
Melissa Holsey. To begin with, Shannon, thank you for your service. Commissioner Stoltz, thank you for your service. In 2024, there were 22 scheduled meetings. Two of them were canceled, one was a budget work session and we're in one of them tonight. So so far, there were 18 meetings held in 2024. The average time of those meetings was 88 minutes per meeting. Now, that's the average. The longest meeting was three hours and 40 minutes or 200 and, three hours, 40 minutes or 220 minutes and that was on September the 12th. The second longest meeting was two hours and 46 minutes or 166 minutes. The fifth longest meeting was on November 14th, that was one hour 51 minutes or 111 minutes. Three of the five longest meetings were the previous three meetings, right, coming up to where we are right now. And only one meeting was held in the month of September, October and November. So the question is, why are we going to one meeting? And I will remain open-minded if there is a very compelling reason as to why we need to do this. I'm not suggesting that it is all nefarious, but, you know, more citizens are becoming involved and becoming aware in Walker County and I would hope that from the citizen standpoint as well as from the board's standpoint, that we would try to work together moving forward and engage more to find out what are the concerns and what can be done about them. And we may not always disagree, we may not always agree with anything, with everything, but I'd like to take that, the fiasco of the three hour and 40 minute Macklemore meeting to point. Why was everybody so upset? Because we felt like we weren't heard. We felt like we didn't get all the information and I think a lot of the challenges that we all are having is communication. We're experiencing tremendous growth in Walker County and it's not likely that there's going to be less items to discuss. I've heard that, you know, well, we're doing this because other counties only have one meeting. Well, we're not other counties. The board, this board does not have regular work sessions nor does it have regular committee meetings and I think that if we move to a situation where the citizens could be involved in a work session or if as many boards function, each commissioner had a committee that they were in charge of and the citizens could come and point their issues out at those meetings, then perhaps one meeting a month would make sense, but we're not there right now. I've also heard that we want to reduce five-minute public comment to three-minute public comment. I would hope that's not true. I would hope that this board would not go down to one meeting and also reduce the time, the only time that the public has the chance to comment on anything. It is my hope that in the new administration, words like mistrust will be replaced by trustworthy or words like irresponsible will be replaced by fiscally responsible and sayings like, oh, that's a good old boy system will be replaced by they're fair to all. I think that we can get there, is my hope that we can. I don't, I think that everybody wants to work hard and do what is best for Walker County.
One more minute.
I'm almost done. And my prayer is that in the future, perhaps one meeting would be possible, but I don't think this is the time to do that respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to be next? Yes, sir, please come up, please state your name.
Ed Flaner. I live on Highway 151 and Shannon, got to know you during your campaign and appreciate the work you've done. I relate to other gentlemen, I know what you faced and we sat in some meetings before you became commissioner and seen and heard what happened. I wish that this many people would have attended back then, maybe we wouldn't be where we at today. I've lived here in this county since 97, loved it, seen it grow, seen things better happen, but freedom is being taken away. What happened to the day that we as citizens get to choose how much we sell our property for, what we do on our property without a bunch of codes, without a bunch of people saying, telling me what to do on my property? I'm retired. I have property in Chautauqua County and Walker County. I have made a decision this year to leave Walker County. I don't want to, but the codes, the new fire fee going on, why we need more fire fee? We've got so much development going on, subdivisions, what is it, two or three subdivisions, 200 houses in each one or so? I know we got to fund Macklemore, that was the biggest mistake ever in BB's place, but that's in the past and we're still paying for all this. But I have chosen to take property that I've developed well. I'm tired of paying and having to fix, I want to move a 10 by 10 building on, I got to come down, get a permit. That's crazy, guys. Now I understand, I hear now, we got an ordinance going on, fixing to happen, put a microchip in these animals, if you don't, you're going to be fined. Now who are you to tell us what to do with my animal?
Keep talking, I like what you're saying.
Now, I, I'm just speaking, please. But I'm choosing to leave, develop property, go to Chautauqua County, well, I got a little bit more freedom. I got to develop that property, but you know what? In one year, I'm retired, 73 years old, I got my taxes down when I was 70. I paid one year $557 in taxes. It got up to $1,600 at one time in the back commission. Now it's back up $1,300 again because the value price is fixing to override my $60,000 I got taken off. You guys are in control of this county. Think about the people out here that can't pay all these. I've got a mobile home sitting on this property too. There again, I got to pay fire fees and taxes. I know we got to grow, I know we got to pay for different things, but it's time that we, the residents of counties, step up. I just hadn't been to too many meetings because I had knee replacement, been sick, a lot of things been going on, but Shannon knows back a few years ago, I attended a lot of the meetings because it's very important that we speak up because nobody else is going to speak for us. You guys can sit here and make all these ordinance you want to, but I promise you, there's going to become a time, yeah, we got millionaires moving in, Macklemore golf course and everything, but you take us down here, I don't do those things.
You got less than one minute.
All right, thank you. And it's time that you guys take in consideration the regular man, retired person. Thank God I don't have a mortgage, insurance, everything I used to pay for, used to be about $700 a month, that's without mortgage. You know what it is now? Over a thousand. Insurance, fire fees, property taxes going up and I'll let y'all buy my land, anybody, for what you've got appraised for today. Thank you, Shannon. Good luck in your future, buddy.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Jamie Holsey. My speech, a good example, a lot of things going on these days. I don't believe the commission meetings have been full just to give compliments for this last year. Been a lot of people have been encouraged. They can see change happen through efforts of others. And, you know, a lot of us take appreciation for that, that people can stand up here regardless of the fear that they used to have that the commission would be after them. So we do like to see that happening. And I read to y'all the Open Records Act. I've read to y'all forefathers' wishes that the public should be involved and watch what y'all do because any politician is not to be trusted. Every citizen is supposed to hold politicians accountable to avoid corruption, to many things like that. So this, going to one meeting is interesting. It's interesting that this meeting and the last meeting was just packed with stuff, you know? We've had a lack of public hearings. We've had accountability issues explaining the truthfully reason of doing things. And, you know, where the public can see is cost-benefit analysis. I'm working, I'm used to working off graphs and seeing, you know, when we get that $2 back on that dollar we give to Macklemore, where's the cost-benefit analysis? Where is the confidence to the public that decisions are being made right? Because, again, I've said it one time before, y'all work for us. It's our money you're playing with. And we don't see the respect for that a lot of ways in this going to one meeting. We've seen quorums, without naming names, outside of the commission meeting, Shannon. You administer these meetings. We've seen quorums meet outside of here. You're supposed to publish those, times, dates takes minutes. And getting to the minutes, I was quoted twice in the last meeting about solar and about animals. Okay, Jamie's concerned about overpopulation of animals. Okay, Jamie's concerned about cutting trees down with solar. Where's the accuracy of minutes? Is it incapability? I'm used to minutes being taken after soundbites, audio at least, of the accuracy of the minutes before because it's not just your minutes, it's the minutes that everybody sees to base decisions on. So, you know, this time of year, Christmas is coming up, right? Okay, the justification, a lot of money spent here. We rode by the pantry in Lafette not long after the big decision, $100, $150 million, whatever revenue that the citizen is supposed to get, saw a big old line at the pantry. I had to stop in the middle of the road, take a picture of the pantry, okay? My buddy Veteran just passed away. Y'all know about him very well. We have homeless veterans. We have people in places they can't even get heat in, in Flintstone. We got people hunger. We got people high grosses. And this is money that needs to support the citizens and decisions totally for the citizens that we don't see every time. So this reduction in public participation, and I've said it before, there's a lot, I mean, that's amazing, the smart people in this community, that y'all could utilize to take part in decisions for the good for all. And I believe, said it best, whoever said it, it's like getting the pulse of the common people in the community. You know, why does that not happen? Why do we not know the pulses of the people, the real needs of the people, before some of these other decisions are made? It's really confusing to me because, working for the people, I would think their answers, their say, their knowledge, the transparency, the accountability matter. So I wish you well, Shannon. I know you did a lot of great things here. We weren't here then, all the finances, we heard the history, but going forward, we're here for centuries, I hope, with our farm to pass it down, just as people that have been here 100 years, 200, the Yates's, the Yates's. But we care about the future just as much as anybody else here, and we'll continue to play a part in that, and I appreciate it. And letting more people participate instead of the lack of public participation would be nice. So thank you, and thank you all. Thank you, Robert.
Yes.
Your service.
Anyone else would like to speak? Yes, sir, in the back. Yes, come on up. Please state your name for the record.
Kenneth Wilson. I'd like to address the fire fee. I've got a recycling company. I've been in business about 40 years. My fire fee is $7,200 a year. My fire fee is more than my property tax. It's my understanding that they's like a $15,000 limit. If that's the case, I do a couple million dollars worth of business a year. Roper probably does hundreds of millions of dollars a year, and my fire fee is half of what theirs is. Small business, it's all out of whack. Just like the gentleman said here before, if I was looking to start a business, it wouldn't be in Walker County. Because, you know, I ain't got that many more years to go, but this fire fee is, it's way out of whack. Small business hasn't got a chance. It's listed on the property tax as a fee. If I go to Walker County and pay my property tax, and I refuse to pay the fire fee, maybe the attorney can answer that. What can they do? Can they take your property if you refuse to pay the fire fee? I know the water company, if I refuse to pay those fees, they cut my water out. Does the fire department just not come and service you? Which, that'd be fine. Normally, they're making bigger mess than what they put out. But something needs to be done with this fire fee. Like I say, when your fire fee is more than your property tax, and I'm paying half of what a roper is for a small business, something ain't right there.
Yes, sir, I believe you're in the middle. The young fellow up behind Roy there, did you want to speak? Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Come on up, Roy. Please state your name when you're ready.
Roy Hambrick. So I had this awesome little speech that I had jotted down, and I'm not even going to do it because most everybody said what was in the speech. Probably a little nicer, right? But I'm going to start my five minutes to say that I appreciate you guys. I was here years ago when we passed the Second Amendment proclamation. I've never had an issue with getting in touch with anybody on the board, and recently I just reached out to mine because it was my neglect, right? Because I'm a citizen, but I've never reached out to Brian, who's my precinct commissioner, and talked to him, you know? I'm excited. I do want to say thank you to Shannon, it's no secret, you know? I know I'm beating a dead horse, but what you came into from the last 20 years, you know, you've done a lot of good work, and we've created, I voted for the commission board, and I do, I'm just like anybody else that don't attend meetings like I should. But, you know, in the date, the present time that we live in, we've got things coming at us all over the place, right? Politically and all over the world, we're worried about everything. And so a lot of citizens are concerned, and a lot of citizens are getting involved, not necessarily, you know, we're not trying to run for office or things, but we want transparency, we want accountability, we want to be involved in the process, right? And not from, I'm not speaking to you guys or anybody in particular, it was because of the government and because of the shape that everything's in, our state government, our federal government, people are now being affected, right? We're in our pocketbooks in every which way, regulation-wise. And the thing about it is, is I understand the enabling rule, I understand the Home, the Enabling Act, the Home Rule, all this stuff, I've done my research, but I do not understand why, at this moment in time, that we would be trying to reduce these meetings down from two to one and possibly reduce the minutes. And nobody has to answer the question. I'm hoping there's a valid reason as to why that would happen, that would make sense because when I look at Walker County, the exponential growth going on, when I see more and more concerned citizens that are plugged in, and as you know, I do a lot of community outreach with the stuff we do online, and so it's kind of like, I'm trying to get people to understand that it's partly their responsibility because we've just been asleep at the wheel, right? It's the whole kids with the cookie jar, nobody's watching, right? So I just don't understand, and I'm not going to go through this long thing, and I know things are coming up, but I don't know why. I know how commission meetings work in other areas, but we've been doing this for so many years, and now you've got more people coming in, more people asking questions, wanting to be involved in the process, why we would go down from two meetings to one. It doesn't make sense. The optics look bad. And so I will spare you my four and a half minutes, but hopefully that will be answered.
Yes, Laura, come on up, please. Please state your name.
I'm Laura Alsley, and I'd like to thank all of y'all that have communicated with me on some of my special requests. So thank you very much for your service. I just really had one question, and that is, maybe two. With regards to the one meetings, is it true that you have to have two public hearings to get certain items approved? Is that, that is true? So in that situation, would y'all call special meetings for that? Okay, I didn't know if there would be an additional meeting that would be called or if it would just extend it. So thank you very much.
Anyone else would like to speak? Yes, sir, Mr. Randy?
I'm Randy Pittman. I represent the Walker County Historic Preservation Commission, and I'd like to just speak briefly on our reefs for veterans at the Tennessee Georgia Memorial Park. Excuse me. The Walker County Historic Preservation Commission partnered with the American Legion Auxiliary Chickamauga Unit 217 to place reefs on the graves of veterans at the Tennessee Georgia Memorial Park this past weekend. Following a short ceremony, more than 40 volunteers placed 530 reefs at the Rossville location. Jenny Chandler, Auxiliary President, and Randy Pittman, Historic Preservation Member, organized the effort. In addition to place reefs in Walker County, the two groups sponsored 108 reefs with the Reef Across Chattanooga at the Chattanooga National Cemetery as well. And I got a little list here of some folks we'd like to thank for helping us out. Food City in Lafette, Rossville, Mission Ridge, and Fort Oglethorpe. The staff at Tennessee Georgia Cemetery, they were awesome. Susan Harden and Mickey Macamish with Reef Across Chattanooga. Some folks that helped us get the word out. UCTV, the Walker County Messenger, and Joe Legee with Walker County. We'd like to thank John Robinson at Valley Mechanical. We'd like to thank you, Board of Commissioners, for reactivating our commission. We sure do appreciate that. Representative Mike Cameron, Reliable On-Site Services, they provided a porta potty at no service. Sheriff Steve Wilson, the American Legion Post 339, they also helped lay reefs. The American Legion Chickamauga Post 217, they helped lay reefs. The VFW Post 3679 in Fort Oglethorpe. The Bank of Lafette, Jeff Yalman, my wife Gina, Ricky Howell, Corey Pittman, for transporting the reefs from the National Cemetery to Rossville. Lane Funeral Home in Rossville, Becky Fox reefs. Becky, she done all the research in the cemetery so we know where the veterans were. It's not like the National Cemetery, you know, there's no question when you go there, there's a veteran there, but Tennessee Georgia Memorial Cemetery, they're scattered all throughout. Operation Outreach with Tina and Brett Gross, Bethel Baptist Church, Second Baptist Church of Lafette, The Canopy in Fort Oglethorpe, Covenant Life Worship Center in Chickamauga, Wanda's Restaurant, McDonald's Chickamauga, and Chick-fil-A at Fort Oglethorpe. So it was a good program, and we reached our goal, and everyone that helped, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Who would like to be next? Yes?
How are y'all?
Please state your name for the record.
It's Angela Pence. Before I get started, I want to say a heartfelt thank you to Commissioner Stoltz for all the work that you've done over the last several years, the sacrifices that you've made. People don't realize how much goes into this job. So I know that the people in your district deeply appreciate it, and I've loved watching it. So I've never complained on you. This is the first time, as you guys know, that I actually have a sheet. So the first and last time y'all may be hearing from me. Over the last eight years, I've stood at this podium a handful of times. Most of those times were to bring harsh criticism to Commissioner Whitfield for a perceived wrongdoing that had happened. To complain about a decision he had made, to air my grievances about how something was being handled, to very specifically call you out on things I disagreed with, I really did have a laundry list. Since your very first campaign, I was against you being the sole commissioner, and then the chair of the board when that time came. Both times, I actively helped campaign against you. I was so strong in my convictions against you that at one point, which was referenced tonight, I marched down Main Street with a group of people demanding your resignation. I did not think that you were right for the job. I thought you were corrupt. I thought you were a liar. I thought you absolutely did not have the best interests of this county in mind. I was convinced you were using us for your own personal gain. You should see the meme collection I have of you with various depictions of your character. I'm so glad I was wrong. Since 2020, through my own involvement in our county, I've had the chance to truly get to know you and get to see your work here. Your dedication and hard work have been a sacrifice that I'm not convinced many people would make for this county. Day in and out, playing the long game, what most people do not realize is that most every move you made was a move that would benefit our county long-term. Sometimes those decisions and moves were not popular. I know a few in particular that even myself didn't agree with. But once you sat down and explained it to me, I always understood. You continued to hammer away patiently and consistently over the years despite the harsh, nasty, and oftentimes incredibly unwarranted treatment you got. Never once harboring any bitterness or anger, but instead always focusing on what your job was, which was to put this county first. I am proud of so many things that you have done since being in office, but I think that the biggest one is the fact that you took our county from being almost insolvent to thriving, completely debt-free. Not many counties in the entire United States can say that. I am so proud to say that you were the right man for the job. You have truly fulfilled your duty as a public servant to this county, our home. As proud as I am of you, I'm equally grateful for the grace you have given me and the friendship you've extended. Despite my treatment towards you, most of the time you were in office, you always had an open door for me. You were always honest, you were always clear, and when I desperately needed the most, you were supportive. I think many of us could learn a lesson from that. I think that most of us can agree that we don't necessarily make room for our enemies at our tables, but you sure did for me, and I'm forever grateful for that. I'm so blessed to be able to call you a friend. So Shannon, here are the words that I never thought I would say, and I know that you didn't either. Good job, and thank you. Thank you for doing this job and doing it well. I know that God is leading you to whatever is meant to come next for you, and I'm so excited to see what that is.
Yes, who would like to be next?
I'm just waiting for an answer.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. Anyone else want to speak in our public comment time? Okay, hearing none or seeing none, we will move forward on our agenda. Next thing we have is under our unfinished business ordinance number 0-01B-24 to amend Chapter 22 of the Land Use of the Code of Walker County section that was tabled on November the 14th, 2024. This gives the, the green and the red, different changes, modifications, strike-throughs. Probably the person that I know that has probably spent the most time in this ordinance is probably Brian Harp at this table. So would you like to speak to this?
Well, I have worked on it a lot. Mike Bun is here tonight. He's worked on it since 2018. Cindy Ashy was here tonight. She's worked alongside with him on that. We had the first hearing on that a couple months ago, and Cindy got together with some local producers and worked on it some more, along with Mr. John Howard over at our county agents' office. And we kind of come to some middle ground on it, made some compromises on both sides of it. I think what's printed there is a good suggestion, a good starting point for the county on the poultry, is it is the leading ag commodity in our county with a gate value of over $99 million. So it does bring in a lot of money to our county, a lot of people allow it for their livelihood, but I do think the suggestions made by the livelihood, but I do think the suggestions made by the group are good, and I would recommend that we approve them as is, unless there's other comments on it.
Very good summary. Any other board member would like to speak?
I would like just to, in addition, thank the, the hard work that has been put into that. I know that it has been a long time coming, and Brian, you and I have talked about it many times, I know Cindy and I have talked, and I know Mr. Bun and others, quite a few folks have worked on it, and that compromise, I think, is what everybody was really looking for, and I think that we should support it, and we have a very good starting point there and something that'll, that'll work for our producers and give opportunities for those existing to grow, and new producers to come in under the new guidelines. So, I would agree and like to support that, and you made that in the form of a motion.
Well, so there's two pieces to this, Shannon, so there's a poultry piece and a solar piece.
Okay.
Right, there's two parts. So, my recommendation on the poultry piece would be to accept it as written.
Okay. Yeah, we can break that out, because you're right, it is two separate issues that were tabled from a previous meeting. So, your motion is to accept O-01B-24 for the sections that are listed with poultry only, so that would end at section number fourteen, the end of second, of section fourteen on page two.
Twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Twelve, thirteen, and fourteen is the motion that is on the floor. So, do we have a second? Have a second, by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board?
No, Shannon.
All in favor of accepting that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. And then, the second half of that deals with the solar energy systems, so would you like to make some comment on that first?
So, I think we do need to make some adjustments on this. I've talked to other district commissioners about that. The planning of zoning did recommend that it goes in a C1 or industrial zone, which I think is an okay recommendation. They based that off the Comprehensive Use Plan, and I can support that. The setbacks they recommended were five hundred feet. Now, it's my recommendation, if you're going to go in a commercial or industrial zone, that we adopt the setbacks that are allowed in that zone, which is in Section 22-181 of the Walker County Code. Those two changes, and then there was a question on the bond at the end. John and I have talked about that numerous times, Mark and I have talked about that. There is a decommissioning plan in place, and per paragraph ten of it, that's got four steps to it. We feel like that that stands good for the bond. We don't, any other businesses in a commercial or industrial area, we don't require a bond for, so it wouldn't be fair to require a bond for this type business in a commercial or industrial setting. So, I'm not sure what, do you, do you have anything to add on that? No, sir, I hope that covered it.
Well, if you wanted to take the five hundred foot setback out, what we may look at doing then is, on section three, where it says the SES shall only be allowed in C1 or I1 zone, we probably want to put a period right after that, and then the wording, and shall be setback from property lines a minimum of fifty foot, the five hundred foot would just all be struck out?
Right.
And then it would reverse back to the code section?
Yes, Section 22-181 of the Walker County Code of Ordinances.
And those are the setbacks that are in place for commercial and industrial.
Okay, so, section twenty-two dash one eighty-one, okay. So, we can insert that as a section for the setbacks, okay? Very good. Any further discussion with the board?
Can I insert this, Mr. Whitfield, as just an example? Because this is something that we kind of reworked, it's not written as that. If Wendy Davis were writing it, can I do that? It basically says what you said, I think, but...
We could show that as supporting documentation and add it to the minutes.
Okay.
But since this is the actual ordinance itself, we would probably need to work off the modified ordinance, but we'll note this as additional.
Well, also, on line one, we need to strike this as well, that's why I brought that in, because one of the thoughts about putting in a, in a big ag area was, is that they wanted to limit it to twenty percent of the property to keep it from footprinting the whole property, but since we're going to commercial and industrial, that part would just be strict, which is line one.
So, strike line one completely?
Correct.
So, it's, which is the SES shall be constructed on a minimum of three or more acres, but shall not cover more than twenty percent of any partial...
Right, that's some of the worry that came out of the Farm Bureau documents, and North Georgia documents that we looked at allowing it in an ag area, but since it's not in an ag area, we would strike that.
Okay. All right, so we're striking that, taking, we're striking the five hundred foot, and we're adding this section, the follow-up setbacks. Anything else?
We're going to strike the bond piece?
We want to strike the bond piece.
I think so, unless...
Section ten, item E, would be to strike the bond.
Yes, because there is some decommissioning verbiage in there that requires a plan for decommissioning. There is a time limit for decommissioning, and if it becomes an issue, we can always add that piece, I think. But again, I would like to include this.
Yes, we can include that as a supporting documentation.
This is something that Mark and I and John worked on.
Yes, that's basically the last...
Correct. Okay. Yes.
Good work, good work.
Okay, so, so are you making those changes in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, so, we have some modifications, which would be to strike the setback of the five hundred feet, which would revert back to the existing code of Section 22-181. It would strike the acreage requirements and the partial percentage of twenty percent, and it was also to try, or delete out TN-E, which is the bond requirement.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, but Commissioner Blake Moore, any further discussion of the board?
No, Shannon.
Hearing none, all in favor of accepting this ordinance with those modifications, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance is approved with those modifications. Okay, the next one that we have is ordinance O-3, excuse me, O-0324, an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter Six of the Code of Walker County, Georgia, regarding animals to provide for spay neuter and licensing requirements for cats and dogs provided for serviceability and other purposes. Whereas the Board of Commissioners is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas the Walker County desires to address the growing number of unwanted animals in our community, and whereas Walker County desires to amend its animal codes to provide for spay neuter requirements for cats and dogs, therefore, be the ordinance that, by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Chapter Six of the Code of Walker County, Georgia's amended as follows. Article Two, Division One, Section Six dash twenty-one defines, is amended to include the following: Altered animals, any animal that has, has had its reproductive organs surgically removed or sterilized in order to render the animal unable to reproduce. This includes any surgical procedures such as, whatever, something injections, interventional, inter...
Intestinal.
Intertestinal injections, or even rendering the animal's physical incapable of reproducing offspring. This includes the removal of ovaries or castration. This is commonly referred to as spay and neuter. Unaltered animals or any animal that has not been spayed, neutered, or sterilized. Article Two, Division One, Section Six dash twenty-six and Six dash fifty-three are amended to include the following. Section Six twenty-six, spay and neuter requirements. A, no person may own, keep, or be in possession of a dog that is six months of age or older, which has not been spayed or neutered unless they hold a license from an unaltered animal or exempt from the requirements under Section E, F, or G hereunder. B, a person may own, keep, or be in possession of a cat that is four months of age or older, which has not been spayed or neutered unless they hold a license for the unaltered animal, or exempt from the requirements under Section E, F, or G hereunder. C, whether a dog or cat shall have obtained the aid set forth under subsection A or B above shall be determined by an authorized county animal control officer or by a licensed veterinarian, or their reliable, reliable veteran medical record. D, prior to the court date listed on the citation, any citation issued or violation of this section may be dismissed if the owner provides proof of Walker County Magistrate Court that he or she has since had their animal altered so as to be in compliance. C, a dog or cat is exempt from requirements of subsection A and B above if the person holds an active registered commercial breeding license or a pet dealer license issued by the Department of Agriculture. F, a dog or cat is exempt from the requirements of subsection A or B above if the licensed veterinarian has signed a document, a document expressing the medical opinion that the dog or cat should not be spayed or neutered for health reasons for the duration of the relevant health conditions. G, a dog or cat is exempt from the requirement of subsection A or B above if the dog or cat is deemed to be a working animal. Here within after defined, a working animal is defined as a dog or cat trained and employed for farming, herding, hunting, service, or shows with written proof such of training, law enforcement, or other actual activities as a working or documented service animal. A dog or cat is not a working animal if the dog or cat does not have a common trait of a working animal, but does not frequently perform the activities of a working animal set forth above in this section. Section Six dash twenty-seven, licensing of unaltered animals. It shall be the duty of each owner custody or harboring of a dog over the six months, or a cat over four months of age, keep, maintain, or harbor within the unincorporated area of Walker County to obtain a license. For such dog or cats, shall they remain unaltered. D, the fee for said license shall be set forth in the fee scheduled by the Walker County Animal Shelter established by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County. C, a license for unaltered animals shall be issued on an annual basis. The beginning date of the license shall, is the date it is purchased. Failure to renew the license within ten business days of renewal date shall constitute a violation of Code of Section, Code, violation of this Code section. D, the license will be issued in the form of a metal tag that shall be affixed to the animal's collar at all times. Revenue generated from the unaltered animal's license shall be kept in a separate account from other funds of the county and earmarked exclusively to fund low-cost spay and neuter and microchipping options for the community. Section Six dash twenty-eight dash six fifty-three, reserved. Number three, the ordinance is effective immediately upon adoption. Four, all ordinances parts of this ordinance in conflict with the ordinance are hereby repealed. Five, if any section, cause, sentence, or phrases of this ordinance is held to be invalid or unconstitutional by the courts of contempt jurisdiction, then said holding shall in no way affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. So, be passed and adopted at this day of two thousand twenty-four. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a comment, start us off. I have had several concerns, I've had some phone calls and conversations and concerns about some of the verbiage. You and I have discussed it, Shannon, and you have worked on some of it, but I'm not comfortable with it myself. I think that we do need to, we have a problem with animals, and that's obvious, everybody knows that. I want to be very, very careful of government overreach and kind of, so I guess where I'm at is one of two, and this has been the pleasure of the board. I think it needs more work. I think that we have, we have time to work on it. I don't think it's something that's got to be done right this minute, but I do know that our incoming new administration is very familiar with this as well, works in that field, and would like to be involved in it and putting it together. So, I'd either like to talk about tabling it, and on a table, I would not want to table it just to the, to the following meeting, because that would not give our incoming, any opportunity to work on it, that would be the next meeting. So, I would make one of two suggestions. I would either suggest that we would table it until the April meeting of the new year, or I would recommend that, I would make a motion not to deny, to turn it down.
When will the director of animal, probably back?
I think she's due back in tomorrow, isn't she? Bailey Clemmons, oh, in two weeks?
No, tomorrow, four to...
Oh, she'll be back tomorrow, be here for two weeks.
When will she be back for you?
March.
March.
So, April would be the meeting after, doesn't it? So, I...
So, Bailey Clemmons is our Animal Control Director, and she's on military service duty right now.
So, I make a motion to table this until the April twenty twenty-five meeting.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore to table this ordinance until the April twenty twenty-five meeting. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any additional discussion of this board?
Yes.
Hearing none, all in favor of tabling this until April, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous support to table this until the April twenty twenty-five meeting. Okay, under new business, we have a resolution R-4524, R-00125 to amend the Enabling Act of Walker County. Get a drink of water before I read this, and this one's kind of long, but it's very important, so I feel like it's very important that we do read this. Resolution R-045-24, R-001-25, a resolution by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to amend the Walker County, Georgia, Enabling Legislation to modify the number of regular meetings to be held each month. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas the Constitution of the State of Georgia, approved by the voters of the state in November nineteen eighty-two and effective July one nineteen eighty-three, provides for Article Nine, Section Two, Paragraph One thereof, that the governing authority of the county may adopt clearly reasonable ordinances, resolutions, and regulations, and whereas additionally, the Constitution of the State of Georgia, approved by the voters of the state in November nineteen eighty-two, is effective July one nineteen eighty-three, specifically provides in Article Nine, Section Two, Paragraph One, Subparagraph B one thereof, that the governing authority of the county may, by resolution, amend local acts applicable to the governing authority, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County desires to amend the local act creating the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, approved May second, two thousand seventeen, Georgia Legislation, two thousand seventeen, Act Number One sixty-five, and ratified by the voters on November the sixth, two thousand eighteen, so as to reduce the number of regular meetings held each month from two to one to repeal conflicting law for other purposes. And whereas, two thousand seventeen, Georgia Law, Act Number One sixty-five nine currently provides, each month at the county seat, the Board of Commissioners shall hold a minimum of two regular meetings. All meetings shall be open to the public as required by law, and shall provide a time period exclusively for public comment. The time and date of the meeting shall be determined by the board in the first meeting of the year. Any resolutions passed by the board regarding the time, date, and place of its monthly meetings shall be published in the official organ one week or two weeks during the period of a thirty-day, immediately following the passage of the resolution. The Board of Commissioners may hold such additional meetings as shall be necessary when called by the chairperson or any two commissioners, provided that all members of the Board of Commissioners shall be notified at least three days in advance of such special meeting, which is open to the public. Three district commissioners or the chairperson and any two district commissioners shall constitute a quorum. No official action shall be taken except upon the affirmative vote of at least three members of the Board of Commissioners, and except upon compliance with Chapter fourteen of Title Fifty of OCGA, the chairperson shall be entitled to vote on a question only if the chairperson's vote would affect the outcome of any vote or issue before the board. The vice chair, while serving as chair, shall be entitled to vote on all matters before the board. All regular and called meetings shall be conducted according to the Roberts Rule of Order. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County wishes to modify the two thousand seventeen Georgia Law, Act Number One sixty-five nine, such as to read of the following. Read are the changes. Each month of the county seat, the Board of Commissioners shall hold a medium, a minimum of one regular meeting. The meeting shall be open to the public as required by law, and shall provide a time period exclusively for public comment. The time, the date, and the place of the meeting shall be determined by the board at the first meeting of the year. Any resolution passed by the board regarding the time, date, and place of its monthly meeting shall be published in the official county organ once a week for two weeks during a period of thirty days immediately following the passage of the resolution. The Board of Commissioners may hold such additional meetings as... The Board of Commissioners may hold such additional meetings as shall be necessary when called by the chairperson or any two commissioners, provided that all members of the boards of the commissioners shall be notified at least three days in advance of such special meeting, which is open to the public. Three district commissioners or the chairperson or any two district commissioners shall constitute a quorum. No official action shall be taken except upon the affirmative vote of at least three members of the Board of Commissioners and except upon compliance with Chapter fourteen of Title fifty of the OCGA. The chairperson shall be entitled to vote on a question only if the chairperson's vote would affect the outcome of any vote or issue before the board. The vice chairman while serving as chairman or chairperson shall be entitled to vote on all matters before the board. All regular or called meetings shall be conducted according to the Roberts Rule of Order. Whereas pursuant to Article nine, Section two, Paragraph one, Subparagraph B one of the Constitution of the State of Georgia, local acts may be amended by a resolution or ordinance duly adopted at two regular consecutive meetings of the county governing authority, not less than seven, no more than sixty days apart, and the notice containing a synopsis of the proposed amendment shall be published in the official county ordinance, organ, excuse me, once a week for three weeks within the period of sixty days immediately preceding its final adoption. Whereas those requirements applicable to the amendment to the local act of the General Assembly by a resolution or ordinance duly adopted by the county governing authority as set forth in Article nine, Section two, Paragraph one, Subparagraph B one of the Constitution of the State of Georgia have been met and satisfied, and specifically notice of the consideration of the resolution has been advertised, and this resolution has been duly adopted by the governing authority at two regular consecutive meetings. And therefore, it be resolved by the Walker County Board of Commissioners that the act creating the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, Law, two thousand seven, Act number one sixty-five nine hereby amend by modifying section nine as the following. Read are changes. Each meeting of the county seat of the Board of Commissioners shall hold a minimum of one regular meeting. The meeting shall be open to the public as required by law and shall provide a time period exclusively for public comment. The time shall, time and place of the meeting shall be determined by the board at the first meeting of the year. Any resolution passed by the board regarding the time, date, and place of the meeting, of the monthly meeting, shall be published in the official county organ once a week for two weeks during a period of thirty days immediately following the passage of the resolution. The Board of Commissioners may hold such additional meetings and shall be necessary when called by the chairperson or any two commissioners, provided that all members of the Board of Commissioners shall be, shall have been notified at least three days in advance of such special meeting, which is open to the public. Three district commissioners or the chairperson and any two district commissioners shall constitute a quorum. No official action shall be taken except upon the affirmative vote of at least three members of the board or commissioners, except upon compliance with Chapter fourteen, Title fifty of the OCGA. The chairperson shall be entitled to vote on a question only if the chairperson votes would affect the outcome of any vote or issue before the board. The vice chair while serving as chairperson shall be entitled to vote on all matters before the board. All regular and called meetings shall be conducted according to the Roberts Rule of Order. Be it further resolved that any other ordinance, resolution, or local law, or portions thereof now in effect that is in conflict with any of the provisions of this resolution is hereby repealed. Be it further resolved that the resolution shall be approved at two back-to-back meetings of the Board of Commissioners, within such meetings are not less than seven nor more than sixty days apart. Be it further resolved upon such dual approval being achieved, a copy of such amendment along with the notice of publication and publisher's affidavit shall be filed with the Georgia Secretary of State's Office, Georgia Constitution, Art nine two one G, the Public Safety, Fee, and Welfare demanding it. The first approval occurring at the duly called meeting of Walker County Board of Commissioners on this date, which would be December the nineteenth of two thousand twenty-four. We'll open this up at this time to the discussion of the board. Mr. Askew, would you like to be first?
I would love to. So, great, great input and some great questions that I would like an opportunity to address. And these changes, and I'm sitting here looking at them here, and you guys are too, we're changing basically about four words. Everything else was, is the same as the Enabling Act came with. You guys have made some very valid points about information, transparency, and being involved and understanding what's going on. And I think all of you are very smart in business. A lot of you have businesses or understand how things, how it takes to put things together. But what I don't know that you think about, and we've sat for four years, this board has worked under this for, not one year, not two, for four years we've done it. We'll have a meeting on Thursday night, tonight, tomorrow, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, and then by the following Wednesday, the draft agenda is to be out so that the board can look at the draft and try to get it back by Friday so that the public has it for a week. Well, we're turning in, trying to turn the agenda around in four days, three days to four days. And it has caused confusion. It is, it pushes getting the facts. It pushes trying to get, make good decisions. As, as has been stated by what Chairman Whitfield has read, the Enabling Act as now requires two a month. That's what was it, was put in to start for the transition from a sole commissioner to a board. We've done that for four years. As it also states, the chairperson, and we will have a new incoming chair, can call a meeting anytime. We can have four meetings a month if necessary. Work sessions, public meetings, whatever. As Ms. Halsey made a very good point earlier, we, we had, we've had canceled meetings this year because of conflict. And so I believe that it will give the board, it will give the chairman and staff more time to prepare and get the, get the meat, get all the facts, get it to the board, giving the board time to review it and come in and discuss it and make responsible and informed decisions. I just pushing things too tight. I've always believed that haste makes waste, and when you try to shove, you're trying to turn agendas around to a month with a four-day working, four days to do it, it's just, and Shannon's done a great job at putting together, and most of the time, and I'm not being smart, but there are times, and you would, I would ask your opinion, but there are times that it is a very hard push and sometimes virtually impossible, and things do get moved to the next, the calendar meeting because we can't get all the information in time, just as like we had to amend the agenda tonight for some late coming information. So it's not in any way, shape, form, or fashion to eliminate participation. The participation is needed, it's wanted, but it needs to be valuable participation, and we need to have time to digest what your thoughts are, what the facts are, and make responsible decisions based on that. And I believe that I have the utmost confidence in our incoming chair as, seeing that we, if we need to call more meetings, that would be, the chairman's the day-to-day, the chairman has all that information in their office. That's the chairman's job. And so we want to enable, we want to allow the time to get it right. Okay? So it's not cutting back on your time to speak. It's not cutting back on, and really, guys, the district commissioners, you are elected out of districts, and we're policy and procedure. When you've got issues, day-to-day issues, or questions about things coming up or concerns, that starts at the chairman's office. There's the day-to-day. That's that job. That's the chairman's job. Then that way, the chairman can understand what the problems are and relate those to the board. And so I just, without belaboring it anymore, there's, there's no facetiousness to it. The time, the time at the first of the year is the time to do it because the calendar has to be set for the year, for publications, for notifications. And so we felt like that was the time to do it, not midstream. So, and I will also, just in closing, state that, you know, the same home rule that allows us to do this, if it's not effective and it's not working and our chairman or the board members see that it's not, we can change it, we can always change it back. But it's trying to give us more time to get better informed and make better decisions. It has nothing to do with cutting anybody's time off. You show up, you talk, your opinions matter. It has everything to do with the quality of time and not packing stuff into, try to get two agendas because the rule says we have to have two meetings in one. So I'll stop there, and if any of the other board members would like to comment.
Yeah, I mean, I felt like for a long time, we've been at this four years, I felt like after a year into this, that number one, this quick turnaround of these agendas made your job difficult, Shannon, because the, you're the one who generates the agenda. I mean, Joe and other folks put it together, but I mean, it's just a constant quick turnaround. And I felt like for a long time that it put a hardship on the staff doing it, doing it. And I felt like, number one, citizens have more accessibility now to county government because of district commissioners. They can call us, they can email us, they can text us, they can talk at the meetings. So a lot of accessibility. So I have never felt like going to one meeting a month would hamper citizens' input or citizens' understanding what's going on in their government.
Any other commissioner?
Well, good points by everybody.
I think it is. I think it's some truth to that. I would like to let the new chairman come on board, meet with her, and make sure this is a good idea for the group. I'm not saying it's a bad, I don't say it's a good idea, but we're changing, we've got a new district commissioner coming in, a new chairperson coming in. So that's my thoughts on it.
Well, I would, I would comment that there has been conversation with, and I'm not going to speak for, but I don't think that there's any issue. It has to be done two meetings in a row. And so that was kind of why we split it at the end of the year. I actually believe that it will help the incoming chairman because I will say this, Chairman Whitfield for four years prepared two agendas a month off of just him. He was the sole commissioner. And like Commissioner Stoltz says, now with four of us, district commissioners, and it's a five-member board, all board members, there's plenty of accessible, there's none of us that are hiding, they're hard to, hard to get in touch with at all. But I think it would aid the chair, the new chair, in getting settled in and being able to get, get it in order and get it right versus pushing, 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 just like it is, and it's a push. And the staff will account to that as well. You know as well, Shannon, that it was a different, it's a whole different ballgame from when you were sole commissioner, putting agendas together than it is now. There's just no way, there's no way that all of us feeding information or getting information in. So I respectfully, I respect all opinions. My personal opinion is I think that it will better, much, much more, be much more efficient for us. And like I said, if the chair feels that, the chair may have ideas of work sessions, the chair may have ideas of public meetings and those kind of things, that'll be up to the new chairperson, and I would support those, those moves one hundred percent. So I appreciate, that's where I am on it.
Okay. Any more discussion? Commissioner Blake Moore, you got anything to add?
No, I'm good.
Okay. And just to remind everybody, it was in this long document. Just for clarification, since it is modifying the Enabling Document, it has to go through a two-step approval process. So that is the four years that we've been under a board, this is the first time we've had a two-step approval process. So this is unique for us. And so when you look at it on page three, you will see that it shows the first approval, which would be today's date, and if, or whatever the vote may be, and then the second approval process would come at the next meeting in January. So this is a two-step process. So this will also come back up under the new board. So when the new board is seated first of the year, they will bring this same item back up on the agenda, and the new board will discuss this, and the vote will be taken then as well. Any other, further discussion of the board on this resolution? Hearing none, do we have a motion for consideration?
I'd like to make a motion for consideration to moving to, to modify the Enabling Act to a mandatory one meeting per month versus mandatory two meetings per month with the ability to, like I said, it states clearly, the only words that are changing is one from two to one, the, all the other, everything else stays the same, and the chair has the ability to call as many meetings as is necessary, and/or two of us district commissioners can ask for and call as many meetings as necessary to handle the county business. So I'm going to make the motion that we, that we move to one mandatory and give our incoming chair the opportunity to see how things work, and if it's not suitable, want to change it, that's always, we can always go back. But it has been, for four years that I've sat here on this board, I've seen the struggle, I've heard it from the employees, I've seen it in the documentation. Nobody's fault, it's a matter of time. And seventy-two hours is not much time to turn around real important business for the county government. So that's why I'm going to make the motion that we move to modify the Enabling Act to one mandatory meeting per month.
I'll second that motion and ask the question. So if we approve it tonight, and it comes before the new commission or the new chair in District Four, and it's denied, then it'll stay two meetings per month?
It has to pass two consecutive. So there'll be another vote at the first meeting of the new year, and the new chair and new district commissioner will be involved in that vote. So we're not, we're not getting the cart ahead of the horse, but to make it happen at the proper time to, for, the first of the year is the time to, because that's when we set, time, date, place, that's, that's the time to do it. And I just feel like if we're going to, that we're doing it at the proper time.
Okay, so Commissioner Askew has made a motion to approve Resolution zero dash forty-five dash twenty-four as presented tonight. Commissioner Blackmore has made the second. Any additional discussion of this board?
I'm going to abstain my vote, Mr. Chairman, until further discussions with the new chairman and the new District Four Commissioner. I feel that's important for me to do that before I make this vote.
Okay. So Commissioner Hart is going to abstain from the vote. Any further discussion? All in favor of Resolution R forty-five dash twenty-four, say aye.
Aye.
Any against it? Hearing none, the resolution carries. Okay. Next resolution, R forty-six dash twenty-four, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County for the purpose of repealing a temporary emergency moratorium on the acceptance of the applications for zoning approvals, building permits, land disturbance permits, and any other approval or permits, or processing of any issuance of decisions on any such applications regarding new solar energy systems or the expansions of existing operations that produce solar power. Whereas the Board of Commissioners, the board passed Resolution R dash zero forty-two dash twenty-four on November the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, enacting a temporary emergency moratorium on the acceptance of applications for permitting solar for permitting solar energy systems. Whereas the board needed time to prepare appropriate amendments to the county zoning ordinance and prepare any other necessary ordinance regarding solar energy systems to hold public hearings required by law and to adopt such amendments and other ordinances. Whereas with the adoption of the ordinance O-01B-24, the need for a temporary emergency moratorium of the acceptance of applications of permitting solar energy system no longer exists. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, does hereby repeal Resolution R. -042-24, so resolved and adopted the 19th day of December 2024. So, as the resolution reads, we are repealing the moratorium because the board took action tonight and passed a ordinance for solar energy systems. So, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is unanimously approved. Okay, Resolution R. 0-47-24, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to participate in the Georgia Department of Transportation Local Bridge Replacement Program, whereas the Georgia Department of Transportation, GDOC, created the Local Bridge Replacement, uh, LOCBR program in 2017 to target the replacement of locally-owned posted bridges using federal funds. And whereas GDOC provides preliminary engineering cost and utility relocations, all construction costs, and 50% of the preliminary right-of-way estimate, estimate that includes all acquisition fees and other related costs. And whereas GDOC has identified two candidate bridges in Walker County for the LOCBR program, which includes Old Bethel Road at West Chickamauga Creek, construction is projected in FY 2029, Glass Mill Road at West Chickamauga Creek, construction in FY 2029. And whereas, in order to participate in Walker County, must provide financial support and agree to pay a portion of the cost of the right-of-way for these projects ranging from $50,000 to $75,000 per bridge. Whereas GDOC, GDOC requires support from the local governing authority in confirmation of financial support for the replacement of the bridges in the LOCBR program. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, to confirm support and financial participation for the replacement of these bridges, so resolved and adopted the 19th day of December 2024. So, it's great that GDOC has identified these bridges, uh, because bridge replacement these days is about, is about $2 million per bridge. And so our investment into those bridges would be a total of either 50 to $75,000 maximum. So, this is a great program that, uh, that has already replaced several bridges in our community. There's several others that are in queue over the next three years, and this would get two more on the list. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion approved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Commissioner Askew, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved to move forward with the bridge projects. Okay, Resolution R. 48-24, Resolution of Walker County Board of Commissioners to increase the supplement to compensate for the solicitor general of Walker County State Court, whereas OCGA 15-1867 provides the solicitor general of the state court shall be compensated from the county funds as provided, as provided by local law. And whereas OCGA 15-1867B states that the county governing authority is authorized to supplement the minimum compensation to be paid to the solicitor general on the state court of that county and provided by local law, but no solicitor general's compensation or supplement shall be decreased during his or her term of office. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas the board included a 4% cost of living adjustment for employees in the county, excuse me, in the county's fiscal 2025 budget. And whereas the pay change for elected official takes place on January 1 of each year, therefore be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the annual county supplement to compensate pay to the solicitor general of Walker County State Court shall be increased by $3,560 effective January 1, 2025, so resolved and adopted the 19th day of December 2024. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Blackmore, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution passes. Next resolution is R. 49-24, Resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to Set the Annual Compensation for the Walker County Coroner, whereas the Georgia General Assembly enacted the local act, Georgia Law 1965, page 2710, that established a salary to be paid to the Walker County coroner. And whereas the local act has been amended from time to time, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, whereas the board is responsible for payment to the coroner's salary. Whereas the board previously set the coroner's salary by Resolution R. -052-23 at $34,400 even, or $2,866.67 per month effective January 1, 2024. And whereas the board included a 4% cost of living adjustment for employees in the county's fiscal year 25 budget. Whereas pay changes for elected officials takes place on January 1 of each year. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the county coroner's position shall be set in an annualized salary of $35,776 even, or $2,981.33 per month for services rendered effective January 1, 2024, so resolved and adopted the 19th day of December 2024. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Blackmore, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved. Next resolution that we have is R. 050-24, Resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to Establish the Supplement Compensation for the Sheriff of the Walker County, whereas OCGA 15-16-20 establishes the minimum annual salary of the sheriff in the state of Georgia. And whereas, in addition to the base salary, a sheriff is entitled to the longevity increases and cost of living increases, whenever state employee subject to compensation plans authorized and approved in accordance with Code Section 45-20-4 receives a cost of living increase or general performance-based increase of certain percentages or a certain amount. And whereas OCGA 15-1620.1 provides that the sheriff of any court who performs the duties of the sheriff of the state court, probate court, or magistrate court, juvenile court, or other county recorded court shall receive an additional salary of not less than $385.90 per month to be paid by the, by, paid from the funds of the county for this service. A sheriff who serves in more than one such court shall receive such salary for up to two courts. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that beginning on January 1, 2025, the sheriff of Walker County shall not receive any additional local supplements to the minimum compensation provided by general law, so resolved and adopted the 19th day of December 2024. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hart?
I have a question, please, um, before we, before we motion. Now, uh, we did discuss this with the sheriff.
Yes.
Sheriff, you, if, we, there was a discussion about this, and, and we, we, you've agreed to...
If you'd like.
Uh, I met our Commissioner Whitfield, and Commissioner Hart came to my office a week ago Monday, and Commissioner Whitfield said that he was rescinding or going to take away the supplement that, uh, the county supplement that I'd had since 2016. Uh, and the reason, and I understood for that was because I'd received a state raise that goes into effect January the 1st. Uh, all the sheriffs in Georgia, uh, received a, uh, a new supplement based on state law. Uh, I also received a, uh, cost of living raise and a longevity raise because I was reelected.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I told them I did not agree with them taking that away. I was opposed to that. Uh, and I didn't know till I got here tonight that, uh, the ordinance was drafted in that language. Uh, maybe that's my fault, I didn't look at it further, but, uh, uh, I didn't realize it was drafted to take that away because I, I thought I made it clear that I didn't agree with that, uh, when they came to talk with me. Uh, I, I have a great salary, uh, I'm thankful for it, uh, I just don't understand why it would be, uh, put on the agenda now when it's never been put on the agenda before. Uh, so I've just got some questions about that. It, it, I, I just have a bad feeling about it, to be honest with you.
I, I was just wanting to understand the compensation, because you had explained to me before, Shannon, in, in short conversation, the differences in the compensation. So, I wanted to just understand what the other...
The, the local... Compensation is $5,800 a year.
And then with the other, that you mentioned, the longevity and...
Every sheriff that gets reelected gets a longevity. Every sheriff this year got a $3,000 raise, uh, or 4%, whichever was the lesser of those. Uh, that's, and every sheriff got the, the court adjustment. Every, all 159 sheriffs in the state of Georgia. So, it wasn't just me, every sheriff, based on state law, uh, that got reelected, got 5%, they got $3,000 COLA, and they got a court supplement. So, that was every sheriff, all 159 of us. There are many sheriffs across the state that receive county supplements. Uh, I don't know the exact number, I inquired this week to try to find out that number. Uh, they were not able to give that to me. Uh, there is some, uh, differences of opinion as to whether, uh, that local supplement can be, uh, taken away once it's enacted. I think the ACCCG says it can be amended at the end of every four-year term, and the Sheriff's Association says that it cannot be. So, we've got two differences of opinion.
Yeah, so, the net effect of the sheriff's compensation would still equal an increase of $8,365.36, excuse me, $8,365.36 would be the net increase as the resolution is written and presented tonight. Uh, it is our understanding that the local supplement can be, uh, taken away at the end of a term or before the next term begins. And in my research, in our look, uh, lookout Mount Judicial Circuit, uh, the other three counties don't provide the sheriff of supplements, my understanding, when I reached out to those county administrators. And so this would still, uh, do that. The difference would be taking away the supplement, which has been $5,850, uh, that had been established, I don't know how many years back.
Uh, it's about eight, eight or nine years.
Big prior to me coming in office.
Yeah, it was in, it was during the hostile administration.
Okay, during the hostile administration. And some of that, I understand, was probably to offset for serving in the courts, and the state law only had one court that could be compensated by the schedule of the state law. So, a local governing authority could implement a supplement to offset, uh, courts or for any other established reason. Uh, but there's not any of the other constitutional officers of Walker County that receive a supplement or have received a supplement since.
There are other, there are other positions within the county that do receive supplements, uh, such as superior court judges, uh, um, the, uh, extension office, uh, and I, I may be missing some, but I do know there are supplements, uh, that are granted to other offices in the county government.
Our extension office gets us up with? Well, it's funded from the state and the county.
It's a collaborative funding.
It's a collaborative funding. Got you.
Yeah. So, we do have a, a motion on the floor from Commissioner Hart, so we need to take action on the, on the motion, and we can still have further discussion. We do have a motion on the floor, so do we have a second to the motion for the resolution as it's presented?
I'm concerned, I, I, I'm concerned about the conflict, uh, if, if we're doing something here again that, that's, that's, uh, I, I don't want to do something we don't have the authority to do, but, uh, your research says we, that we can. David, you say we don't have, you don't have an opinion on, you've not, you've not looked into it, so we don't have an opinion there.
But if it come up that there was, uh, you know, legal opinion that it could not be removed, then the board could reenact it, you know, at any time. But in order to remove it, it'd have to be done before the end of this calendar year to be in effect, and then it would be in effect for, you know, the four years, or it could be added back.
Does this have to be done by the end of the year?
Yes, it had to be done by the end of the year. But you could add it back, you know, later if deemed that it was not constitutional.
Okay. So, basically, it couldn't be tabled until the next meeting for review?
Unless we called a special meeting.
I see. Okay.
Gentlemen, I, this probably sound, uh, you don't, everyone take anything off the table, but I would be willing to, uh, even negotiate that. I mean, $4,000 a year is not, it's not going to make or, make me or break me, it's just a principle of the thing, is what I understand, the way I look at it.
Sheriff, you've been my friend for a long time, my dad has been my great friend. But I'm going to tell you where I, why I support this, and since we're going to discuss it. So, current salary is $138,000 and change, with the supplements from the state that goes to $147,000 and change, it's a 6% increase. And that's, you know, we, we just gave, Billy Sims a 4% increase, and everybody else in the county a 4% increase. But with the additional supplement from the county, that takes the salary to $152,000 a year, which is a 10.3% increase. So, as, as I see folks out in this community struggling to buy groceries, to buy gas and everything else, and we're giving them 4%, and I think that's great, that's, if we're going to discuss it, that, that was my part of it.
And I would be willing, I mean, just for sake of numbers, uh, the, the solicitor, who's my friend, you just give him a $3,500 raise, I would be even willing to amend it from 5,800 to 3,500. Uh, I think that would be a fair, a fair meeting place, uh, if you want to, you know, if you want to negotiate numbers. That's, that's my position.
But if that 3,500 would give him...
4%.
That's the 4%. Basically, what the state, I mean, we give it to county employees, but I was trying to keep him up with...
Well, this would, would still...
You're talking about tax, correct?
For clarification, the way the resolution is written, it would currently give a little over a 6% raise. Uh, if the full supplement was enacted, it would be over a 10% raise. So, this recommendation or suggestion or ask would be to add an additional $3,500, which would put us somewhere between that 6 and 10% of an increase.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, if we do that, it's going to cost the county double the 3,500 because the chairperson makes 500 more than the highest paid elected...
That's correct. Plus your taxes and other things that are tied to dollars of payroll, retirement, taxes, insurance, workers' compensation.
But, but, Sheriff, I...
I just don't like the way it was proposed, and I just have to be quite honest with you, I just, that's how I feel about it.
And I, and I would respect, definitely respect, definitely respect that opinion, and that's why I wanted to kind of hear, hear from you on this. I, I do feel, you know, that a 6 point something percent, you know, is a good, is, and it's not your fault that you get these other supplements.
These are all state-generated, these things that happen.
It, it's not your fault, but I do, I, I would, I would, I would say thank you for, uh, for accepting or be willing to accept, you know, what, whatever the board has, decides to do, because, uh, like I said, we have given 4% across the, that's been, and 6% is what you're getting now through the state and, and everything else, and I think that's a pretty good as well. Don't, don't want to take anything away, but we, but we, you know, we're, we, uh, every dollar counts.
I'd ask you to entertain that counter offer, and I'll sit down.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your...
Thank you. Okay, so, we do have a, a motion that we'll have to address, so we have a motion to accept the Resolution R. 50-24 as presented. Do we have a second to that resolution, or to that motion, excuse me?
I'll second it, so we're legal to discuss it, because I know we've been discussing it out of turn.
True.
But, I mean, nobody wants to take anything away from anybody, but when you're giving 6% and everybody is struggling, I mean, I see where Brian's coming from, nobody wants to hurt the sheriff. I mean, it's a, it's a tough decision both ways. That's all I got to say.
Okay, so we do have a motion, we do have a second, is there any additional discussion? Okay, hearing no additional discussion, going to call for the vote. Uh, do we have, all in favor of Resolution R. 50-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution carries as presented. Hearing none, the resolution carries as presented. Next item that we have is Resolution R-51-24, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to declare property as surplus and removed from the county inventory, whereas OCGA 369-2 provides that the county governing authority shall have the control of all property belonging to the county and may be by order entered on its minutes direct the disposal of any real property which may lawfully be disposed of and make and execute good and sufficient title thereof on behalf of the county. And whereas Walker County Fire Rescue requests two hundred and fifty, fifty-foot sections of three-inch fire hose be deemed surplus, and further requests that the property be removed from the county inventory. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that two hundred and fifty, fifty-foot sections of three-inch fire hose be hereby declared unserviceable surplus, removed from the county inventory, so resolved and adopted the nineteenth day of December 2024. Chief Hodge is out sick, he's, sounds pretty rough, and then Assistant Chief Theroad is out of town, and so the chief wanted me to share with y'all that the average age of these items here being surplus is about twenty-eight years as the average. And they're having, you know, it's, it's past its useful life, it's leaking, they're having issues with it. And so his recommendation, as listed here, would be to, you know, surplus those items and to make it available or donate it to any other utility or water company or authority or anything within the county that might, could still use them for some other purpose other than fire protection. So we just don't have to just junk them, you know, throw them away. So, but he regretted not being able to be here tonight, but he did want you to know that the average age of this hose, they've got the life out of it for using it for twenty-eight years on fires. All right, so we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Askew, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution carries unanimously. Next item we had is a Resolution R-52-24, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to adopt, excuse me, to appoint a member of the Bridge Health Board, whereas the Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas one of the duties delegated to the chairman of the board is to appoint members to all committees of the board with the approval of the board. And whereas the state of Georgia created the Bridge Health Board formerly known as the Lookout Mountain Community Services in accordance with the law, and whereas by law, the Bridge Health Board called for board members to serve for three-year terms, and whereas the term of Eddie Upshaw, a Walker County member, expired on November the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, whereas Chairman Whitfield submits the following appointment to serve as a representative of Walker County on the Bridge Health Board, Susan Tankersley for the term beginning immediately, expiring on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment of Susan Tankersley is approved, so resolved and adopted the nineteenth day of December 2024. Eddie Upshaw has been outstanding to serve on this board, but he has hit his term limits. So he's not eligible to be reappointed. So regretfully, he has to stay off at least for one term, and so he's not eligible at this time. Susan Tankersley come as a recommendation from Bridge Health, they sent me an email requesting that she be appointed, and she's willing to accept this appointment. Also, as a reminder, Walker County provides Bridge Health Board no funding, no in-kind services, but their bylaws and their status of government, of nonprofit, it requires that some of their board positions be appointed by this governing authority. So this is just honoring the request to help them stay into compliance with their regulatory body that they have. So at this time, I'll make the motion to approve Resolution R-52-24 to appoint Susan Tankersley to the Bridge Health Board. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution's approved, put Miss Susan on that board. All right, the next we have is a Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint members of the Walker County Board of Assessors, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas OCGA 485-295 provides that members of the County Board of Assessors shall be appointed by the county governing authority, and whereas one of the duties delegated to the chairman of the board is to, to appoint members to all committees of the board with the approval of the board, and whereas a vacancy will exist at the end of the year of the Walker County Board of Assessors due to expiration of term, and whereas Chairman Whitfield submits the following appointment to serve as a member of the Walker County Board of Assessors, Karen Deck, for a term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-nine. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County that the appointment of Karen Deck to the Walker County Board of Assessors is approved, so resolved and adopted the nineteenth day of December 2024. Karen is currently on the board, and she's been serving for several years, done an outstanding job when she went to the initial training several years ago when she first started. At that time, she scored the highest on the test of anybody that had ever taken the test. So she is a phenomenal member, very knowledgeable, and it's with great honor to make the motion to reappoint Karen Deck to the Board of Assessors. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution's approved. The next item that we have is some information from GDOT, where they are requesting that a speed limit be reduced from fifty-five miles an hour to fifty miles an hour on Highway one ninety-three. This was a request, you'll see in the email that was made by one of our state-elected officials to have this study done. They come out and did the study, and they are making the recommendation that this section of road be reduced by five miles an hour. As you can see, the list of roads that the county can run radar on is kind of, kind of limited, and so these are the regulations that have to be followed, and these have to come before this board. And you'll see on the last page of this that if this board approves this recommendation by GDOT's engineers, that all commissioners have to sign this document. So guys, if we approve this before you leave, I need you to sign this one document.
Yes, sir.
All right, so do we have a motion to accept the recommendation of GDOT to reduce this speed limit in this one section?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Actually, we save time, we'll start down there at District One, that second line, assist Commissioner and sign that, and that way we'll save some time. Okay, the next thing that we have is the Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit Drug Task Force Intergovernmental Agreement that we do each year. I think Sheriff, you wanted to speak to the intergovernmental agreement on the task force, I believe?
Yes, the intergovernmental agreement contract, we do this every year in December, and basically CJCC requires that all the participating agencies involved in the Drug Task Force sign off on what they'll do and how they'll do it, and the type of monies that are exchanged and those type of things. And we've been doing this now for thirty-five, thirty-six years. The Drug Task Force has been around since July of nineteen ninety, and it's, I reviewed it, and I don't see anything any different from prior years. And the governing agency is the Chautauqua County Commissioner's Office now, they are the financial responsibility for the Drug Task Force, and everything runs through there. And all of our books are audited every year through Chautauqua County.
It would be your recommendation?
Recommendation from me as chair of the Drug Task Force that Walker County sign the intergovernmental agreement contract.
Question to the Sheriff on the Drug Task Force agreement?
No, sir.
And has he indicated this is something that's done annually, and the sheriff also has to approve this, and he has done so, and so just from a formality standpoint, we would need this board to recommend a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Askew, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion's approved.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, the next item that we have is Office of the Governor's Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Subgrant Award, project name Mental Health Court, subgrant number J-25-8-073. This is a supplement to an existing grant, the supplement, it's a state funding of forty-four thousand dollars for mental health, and you'll see that the grant period is from January one, two thousand twenty-five, to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. So this is only funding this position for six months. So I would recommend that the county leadership be mindful of that going forward into the next year, because this is providing pay for a staff person that would be added to our payroll system, and just need to make sure that the funding is there to cover that second half if they are awarded that, which very possibly could be, because pretty much all the state grants end on June thirtieth of each year, so this may just be to balance that out, and it's something to be mindful of. But I did speak with our CPA, Greg McConnell, today, and he saw no issues, and there's no matching funds, but this does provide six months' worth of funding for that position. Any questions, concerns?
No, sir.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this supplemental state fund grant for the county to manage these grant funds?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the grant is accepted. All right, the next item we have, this is a long one, and since the board has already approved, well, let me back up here, I'm getting ahead of myself. No, this, this is a long one, I'm not going to read this one, but I will give a summary overview. As you all know, for about ten years, we went in our community in the bicycle race for Iron Man come through Walker County. Once a year, they called it the short race, made one lap, second time of the year, it made the second lap. They went around twice. And so this past fall, the contract had run its course, and so we did not renew that contract for that second race, that double loop, which is very, very hard on our community doing that double loop. And so what this is, this is a memorandum of understanding, which would be between the county, the City of Chickamauga, and the World Triathlon Corporation, which is the Iron Man organization, but this would provide to us a thirty thousand dollar check that would go toward, earmarked toward the Chickamauga Battlefield Connector Trail project, and they will provide those funds within thirty days of the effective date. So this would still just do the one race per year, the shorter race, and in compensation to the county to give back to the community, they would be providing funding for a project that we have in queue, that would provide an additional thirty thousand dollars, and they would pay that all upfront.
And that thirty thousand is for the race in oh-five and oh-six, correct?
Twenty-five and twenty-six, yes. So it'd be for two events, and then after that, then you go back to the negotiating table after the two races.
So it's fifteen thousand dollars per race?
That's correct. So you'd have one race on May the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the following year, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-six, you would have one race, and then you'd go back and renegotiate for any future races, if they continued in this market or not, you know, in Chattanooga as a whole.
Yep.
But this would provide compensation to go toward the Chickamauga Battlefield Connector Trail of thirty thousand dollars, and they would give that to us within thirty days of approving this, and also the City of Chickamauga has this on their agenda for the end of this month as well. So once all three parties signed and approved this, within thirty days, they would provide the funding upfront.
Upfront?
Within thirty days of us all agreeing. Any other questions?
No, sir.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Chickamauga, Walker County, and the World Triathlon Corporation?
No, sir.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the rest, the memorandum is approved. The next item we have is a transportation, transportation service agreement through Transit Alliance. They have been the, the middle company between Department of Human Health and Services and the counties across the state. I'm not going to read this, because this is very, very long, but in essence, this provides grant funding primarily for our senior citizens to get transportation to our three community centers. And so those community centers provide a lot of health and food and other type of services for, for our citizens, our seniors, and this provides any senior that wants to go to any of the three community centers, transportation to and from at no cost. And so that saves each senior four dollars each trip, or round trip would be a total of eight dollars. And so if a senior goes to the senior citizen center three, four, or five times a week, they could be spending, you know, forty dollars a week of their social security money going to the senior center every week. And so this is a, is a huge benefit. As you see in the documentation, this come to us the first part of December, even though this grant is for July first of twenty-four through June thirtieth of twenty-five, but we just got it. So government at its best. So this grant award is for eighty-six thousand and twenty-two dollars. This does come up annually for us to approve this. If the board decided that they did not want to accept this, then we would be charging our seniors to go to the community centers. So do we have any further question, or do we have a motion to approve this subgrant?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blakemore, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Lot of pages to this, I still didn't get them all. Okay, there we go. All right, the next item we have is a purchase order two thousand twenty-five dash four seventy-three for the amount of fifty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars to Prater Ford for an F-250 command staff vehicle for Walker County Fire and Rescue. This goes along with the fire department's continued updating their apparatuses and command staff vehicles, and so they have in their master plan for vehicle replacement to update a vehicle every two years for their command staff, and they rotate those through the ranks. And so this is on the state pricing contract from Prater Ford, who does a great job, and we've bought many vehicles from them in the past, but this purchase order is purchase order two thousand twenty-five four seventy-three in the amount of fifty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution? Or this?
Motion to approve.
Or this purchase order, excuse me. So we have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? Hearing none?
These funds are coming out of, it's not sploshing.
These are some remaining ARPA funds, great question. Yes, some remaining ARPA funds we've used exclusively for capital projects.
Okay.
Yes. So ARPA funding, so this would be paid out, no debt.
Okay, very good.
Very good question, though. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase order's approved as presented. Okay, now I know y'all been here a long time waiting on these zonings. Hawks Ridge Holding LLC requests a partial rezone from C-1 Commercial to APUD, which is a planned unit development for property located at one eighty Hutchinson Drive slash one oh-four Quarter Street, Rossville, Georgia, three oh seven four one, tax map and parcel number zero dash one one nine dash zero zero two and zero zero two A. The recommendation for denial by the planning commission. So Mr. Persley, our planning director, please come forward and give us some background on this item that's up for consideration.
Hawks Ridge, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, so Hawks Ridge, he's asking, originally, I think it was thirty-two lots to extend Phase Four out to Happy Valley Road. The new rendering, that's why it was originally turned down, one of the reasons he did not have a, I think, one of the comments was he did not have a rendering, and they could not support that many houses on six acres, excuse me. So he's modified that, put it in compliance with... So he's modified that, put it in compliance with... Not compliance, excuse me, modeled it kind of after Fieldstone Farms, how it has a PUD entry, goes to commercial, then residential, reduced the lot sizes, I think down to twenty-four lots now. Leaves two hundred feet of commercial in the front, and then to the south, it has commercial on the corner right there as well.
Okay, any questions of the board, Mr. Persley?
Also gave you a copy earlier of Hawks Ridge in the comprehensive plan. That property there is in neighborhood, so land use is residential in that area per our comprehensive plan.
Questions for Mr. Persley?
I just want to say thank you for taking what me and you talked about and considered to Mr. Hagman, and I appreciate Mr. Hagman willing to work for the county, and they always feel the best.
Yes, sir, yeah, I mean, we already have a similar project off Highway twenty-seven there, which is Fieldstone Farms, usually PUD is mixed-use, a little bit of commercial. So it's kind of mirroring that, something that we already have in the community that's working well, that's not a nuisance, that's benefiting both commercial use and residential use.
It looks like that on the proposed drawing, it's actually going to enhance the commercial ability there, because instead of just one big commercial tract, those smaller commercial tracts would allow for types of services, like service-oriented businesses or things like that, to provide support to the community.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's just what it appears to be.
Yes, so one of the challenges with that partial there is coming in off Highway Two, Battlefield Parkway. It's a limited access, and so getting access from G-dots a challenge. So making that a commercial entrance to accommodate both residential and commercial is going to be the best use for that partial.
Any further discussion? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board to this request? We call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the request is granted. Okay, next that we have is the RL Wooten request, a rezone from A-one Agricultural to C-one Commercial for property located at sixty-five sixty, Highway one-fifty-one, Lafette, Georgia, three-oh-seven-two-eight, tax mapping partial number zero dash five-one-six dash zero-one-two-eight. Recommended by, recommended for approval by the planning commission.
Chairman Whitfield, I'm going to recuse myself because the potential buyer in this property is my cousin.
Okay, so Commissioner Blakemore, for the record, will recuse himself, so there's not any potential of conflict. So Mr. Persley?
RL Wooten there, the packet I gave you shows his partial, also shows you the crossroad community, which he's part of, and so part of the crossroad community per the Big C, which is the comprehensive plan that we always discuss. He is in compliance with our comprehensive plan, per the comprehensive plan. Crossroad communities is a mixture of residential plus commercial activity. So he is in compliance with that as well, and the board did vote to approve this. The planning board, that is.
Any questions to Commissioner Persley on this one?
No, that's good, so does every crossroad community have like a radius around it?
Yes, sir, that's one, that's second page there, or might be the third page, shows you the breakdown. That one I did was, I just encompassed it.
It's like a one-mile radius.
And put the star on there to show where his partial.
Now, see that, but what is that radius?
It's like a one-mile radius?
Yeah, I believe it's one mile.
I believe it.
From the center line, from the intersection, the two, the two there up there. Yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board on this request?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion?
One other thing to discuss, so I did have a neighbor call me, you and I talked, so the business license will be issued once the building is in compliance per code.
Yeah, that's correct, the fire marshal, anytime there's a business license out for a commercial business, it has to be inspected by the fire marshal, he has to have his approval as well. Anytime you're operating a business, you know, you have to have certain things, as far as life safety, restrooms, functioning, the wastewater and potable water means.
Right, very good, that was my question, Mr. Persley, thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the request is approved. All right, the next we have is the C-Rock City from Doug Chapin, request a rezone from R-one Residential to C-one Commercial for property located at zero, Highway one-fifty-seven, Lookout Mountain, Georgia, three-oh-seven-five-zero, tax mapping partial zero dash zero-four-four dash zero-zero-one. This was tabled by the planning commission. So...
Yeah, so the primary reason it was tabled by the commission, or they had requested that to reach out to the community. They own the property down in Flintstone off Highway one-ninety-three, which is commercial property where the corn maze, and so they're wanting to do something on the mountain to encompass both of those partials. I think at one time, they were spitballing the idea of maybe, I don't know the proper name, but lift carts or like a ski, you know, to park down in the valley and then to haul people up to the top of the mountain, because there's limited parking now, plus it's a congested area going up the mountain. So they currently own, you know, Rock City, they own the partial there, it's just its own residential currently. And so they're wanting to encompass their property that they own in Flintstone on the, off of one-ninety-three, and then, or I don't know if that's one-ninety-three or Chattanooga Valley Road right there.
Old Chattanooga.
Old Chattanooga Valley, excuse me, yeah, so Old Chattanooga Valley Road. That's correct, yes, sir, and then...
So it'd be your recommendation that we table this until planning commission?
That's correct, so they had some folks in the community reaching out to them, so they asked us to table. So our recommendation would be to table it and allow them to go back in front of the planning board in January.
Okay, so we have a recommendation to table this until planning has time to review and get an additional comment from the community.
I support that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart to table this to the next meeting.
Second.
We have a second by...
Would it be to the, I didn't mean to interrupt, but would it be to the next, once the planning commission has a chance to?
Our meeting's on the sixteenth of January, so it'd be the following.
So it'd be, it wouldn't make it before, you'd have to be the February meeting.
Okay, so we made your motion to table it to the first meeting in February?
Right, until they hear it, correct.
Okay, so it'd be tabled until the first meeting of February twenty-twenty-five? So we have a second by Commissioner Blakemore, any further discussion?
Is it all on y'all's agenda for that January meeting?
That's correct, yes.
Good question, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor to table this, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it will be tabled until February. All right, the next we have is the Kelly Lee Griffin, Paige Griffin, request a rezone from R-two Residential to C-one Commercial for property located at thirty-four oh-four North Highway twenty-seven, Lafette, Georgia, tax mapping partial number zero dash three-two-two-four dash zero-zero-three. The recommendation for the planning commission was to approve. Mr. Persley?
Yes, sir, that's the old...
Pan motion.
That's correct, yes, sir. And so if you notice on that second page, it does touch C-one Commercial, split zone to the south of it there, it's in, as far as our comprehensive plan, it's in mixed use, which does allow commercial use, office space, and residential use. So it does meet our comprehensive plan, so the planning commission recommended to approve this.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Askew, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it is approved as presented. Okay, the Randall Dalton request for variance for property located at one-thousand-one-sixty-one North Highway twenty-seven, Rock Springs, Georgia, three-oh-seven-three-nine, tax mapping partial number zero dash three-two-five dash zero-two-six, which are recommended by approval, for approval by the planning commission, Mr. Persley?
Yes, sir, is recommended to approve as well, it's been uniform with what we've done with them in the past. We've had no issues with parking or any congestion at these stores, so the recommend, recommend was to approve.
Any questions for Mr. Persley?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's approved as requested. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, we do have a couple of more items here. We have the intergovernmental agreement for the purchase of a water storage tank and other water distribution network improvements between Walker County and the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority. Attached to this was the original resolution, which was back in two thousand and twenty-one, where the county agreed to appropriate five million dollars of the ARPA COVID money that came into the county in support to try to get, or to accomplish the projects of getting water to the Lookout Mountain, in particular, to the areas that have no public water at all, being Flaherty Road, Grifth Johnson Road, they have failing wells, even with nine water systems in Walker County providing water. Here we are in modern day time of two thousand and twenty-four, and they don't have any water anywhere close to them. This has been a long process, trying to figure out all of the engineering, the pathway up the mountain due to engineering hurdles has changed four different times, and that's why this has not been able to move forward. We do have the easements now in place to go up off of West Cove Road, off of Tatum Road. There's some property owners that have agreed to give us the pathway up the mountain. And so this was brought to our attention by our CFO that the allocation of the project, to identify the projects, has to be in place in a resolution, or excuse me, an intergovernmental agreement put in place by the end of this year, so we don't forfeit those funds back to the federal government. And so this here defines in this that, number two, on page one, funding to be provided in order to induce the authority to construct a water storage tank and the other distribution network improvements on top of Lookout Mountain, the county's obligation of five million dollars from the state and local fiscal recovery funds to carry out this project. So the Water Authority has awarded a contract for a one-million-gallon storage tank to be placed on Lookout Mountain that was a little over two-point-eight million dollars. And the bidding process will go out in the next week or so for the actual water line to go up the mountain, and also a separate bid for the water line to go down Grifth Johnson to Flaherty Road. And we have already purchased a large amount of the pipe in advance, because we knew there would be pipe supply chain problems. And so this just gives better clarity to the original resolution and makes sure that the funding is earmarked specifically to the projects that are stated and gets us in compliance with the federal and state government, so we don't have to send this money back. And so the projects that we're looking at are, you know, we're probably two or three times this amount, but this would go to help show local support. So we need a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement to move forward and keep this funding valid.
Yeah, I got a question. We asked an hour.
Yeah, let's do the motion first.
A motion to approve.
So we have a motion to approve of Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Blakemore, so your question?
My question is, so the county allocated this, the county government, the board commissioner allocated this money to Walker County Water and Sewer.
Yes.
Will the county hold that money till the project started, the Walker County Water and Sewer?
So the county is continuing to hold that money, because we, the Water Authority has to turn in paid invoices.
And they pay them.
And they pay on reimbursement. So there has been a little bit of this money, I think less than fifty thousand dollars roughly, that has been paid out, and that was for the engineering services.
Okay.
But the Water Authority would pay the invoices going forward, it's continued, and will be reimbursed, and then it all goes through the audit process and to make sure that it follows these guidelines.
So the money is earmarked for the Water and Sewer Authority but held by the county?
That's correct.
Okay.
So we're drawing it.
That is correct.
Brian Hart, good job.
That is correct. Any other questions?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor of approving the intergovernmental agreement with Walker County Water and Sewer Authorities say, let's see, yeah, we have a motion to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agreement is approved. All right, the next item that we had added to our agenda, this is a quote for paving with Tally Construction, and it's piggybacks on our contract existing, where we bid it out fifty-one miles of paving this year, where our binder cost is a hundred and eight dollars and seventy-five cents per ton, the topping's a hundred and twenty-one dollars per ton. But since these projects obviously exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, this would come before the board for approval, so I know Commissioner Brian Hart's been involved in this, Carlin Bowers, our Public Works Director, and I have also met with Tally this week. We got this final proposal yesterday, so we needed to add it to the agenda. So while there's still some paving opportunities, we can get these projects moving. So this would be to pave the DFAX building parking lot, which is in very bad shape. There's a lot of soft spots and all this got to be dug out, which this talks about. We have an earmarked designated maintenance fund on DFAX that is set aside in a separate account, it's always been that way, that is a portion of their rent that they pay goes into a maintenance fund. And there's more than enough money in that maintenance fund to cover a hundred percent of that estimated cost. And then the Ag Center projected cost there, that was the one-point-two-million dollars of splosh money, where the board agreed to take six-hundred thousand dollars of that for the Ag Center, six-hundred thousand for the Watson Dana Building. And so there is still funding left out of that six-hundred thousand dollar allocation for the Ag Center, correct, Commissioner?
Well, correct, we didn't a hundred percent agree to that, that was our discussion, we were kind of leaning towards that. But to clear that up, so going on that six-hundred thousand allocated for the Ag Center, we've spent about a hundred and thirty-two thousand of that. So this number will put us south of two-hundred thousand dollars, which leaves us four-hundred thousand dollars spent at the Ag Center for future projects. We looked at paving the back parking lot, but the cost of it doing it versus what projects they wanted to do, we decided not to do.
And there's some talk about maybe an outside storage facility as well?
Yes, that's why we opted out of paving that back out. That's right. But that's correction, yes.
So this is all, that part would be splosh dollars, no debt, and then the election office, which is being prepared here in Lafette, that parking lot's in real rough shape, it's been patched different places, and it's really a hazard just to even walk across, there's so many changes in elevation, but that would help make that property look like a new facility. The building's looking very nice, but this is an estimated cost to do some milling there and then to re-top it. The base is good, there's not any problems with base, so we're not going to have to do anything other than just some top milling and put down the topping to get a real nice smooth surface and then get the striping down as well. So that one's estimated at seventy-two thousand dollars. And again, we can piggyback on these existing prices for asphalt.
And the funding source on that one?
That one would be our splosh allocation for our facilities, upgrades and improvements that we've been using to update and remodel that building. So, yeah, so all of this would be done with cash funds that are currently available.
Of the twenty-twenty splosh.
Out of the twenty-twenty splosh on the DFAX and on the elections.
And this is from Tally, but they're subbing this work out, correct?
Yes, but the benefit of this is that we're piggybacking on that per-ton price, and they will be providing the asphalt, but subbing out the actual labor, because their paving equipment for highway paving is larger, and they don't actually physically do parking lots anymore.
But they supply the product.
They supply it, they'll handle the oversight of the project and stand good for the quality of the work.
Tally's handling the sub then?
Yes.
Okay, that's right.
And they'll stand good for the performance and the completion of the job.
I'm good.
All right, great question. So do we have a motion to approve these three projects, to move forward with these?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's approved. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our statistic reports. We've been here almost three hours, y'all can see that, we're not going to cover that in detail tonight. We will move to our next agenda item, which is our commissioner's comments, so Commissioner Blakemore?
I'd just like to say, Chairman Whitfield, Commissioner Stoltz, it's been a pleasure working alongside you guys. Stoltz, I knew you a long time. working alongside you guys. Stoltz, I knew you a long time. Shannon, I've come to know you on this board. I know both of you guys had the best interests of this county at heart. I know everybody on this board's been criticized for being a crook or trying to pad your own pockets, but I know both of you have served this board and this county well, and this is a very thankless, thankless job. Thank y'all for what y'all did.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Askew?
Here again, I do want to acknowledge Shannon, you have, you've been at the helm for eight years now, four by yourself and then four leading this board, and there have been some huge accomplishments. Too many to speak, but it is, a lot of times, we don't, you don't do it for, it is a selfish job, and we don't do it for accolades. We do it because we care about our community. And I want to thank Commissioner Stoltz, same way. It's been an honor and a privilege for both of you, working with you. And I do want to thank here at the year end, I want to thank all of our county employees for the hard work that they put in. I want to thank the citizens that are involved. I want to thank the, you know, and say that I'd like to see more involvement. Like I said, I have no problem listening to ideas and kicking things around. I think it helps us do a better job. And in closing, I would like to just wish to everybody a Merry Christmas, to your families, you and your families. Just remember what the season's about, and let's try to reach a hand out and help those that aren't as fortunate as us. And it's been an honor and a privilege. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark.
Commissioner Hart?
Yeah, thank you, Shannon. As they said, thank you for what you've done. It's a thankless job. A lot of people throw rocks at you. We throw rocks at you sometimes, too, but.
No.
We work through it, and it's been a, it's been a, I've learned a lot from you in four years. I have, and you've done a lot for the county, so it's great working with you. Angie's coming on board. Looking forward to working with her as well. And Robert, thank you. Me and Robert talk every morning about six o'clock in the morning. That's the only time we can ever get together.
That's a late morning.
That is late, yeah.
That's a late morning.
We've had a lot of discussions very early in the morning.
We have.
Great to work with. And Gene, Gene's already left, so he might have changed his mind.
He's out there talking.
But thank you, too. It's a tough job. And then, David, David Gottlieb. So, I've called David many times, and a lot of times, people in the county will call me fussing about something. I say, well, call the county attorney. You're paying a salary. And so, they call him with all kinds of questions. And it always was helpful to them and answered their questions. So, David's worked here for five years now. Done a great service for the county, so.
Thank you.
His job is quite thankless as well sometimes, but that's okay. He serves us well. So, thank the three of you and for what you've done, and look forward to working with Angie and Gene if he don't decide to run for the board. Robert, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. And gentlemen, it has been a pleasure to work with each and every one of you. We've had some tough times. We've had some great times. We've had some funny times, and it's just been a pleasure. Shannon, you have done a wonderful job. I've enjoyed working with you and just think you've done very well for our county. And I do have a little statement to read. I'll be brief. We've been here a long time. But just to mention, also, New Harvest Baptist Church will have their candlelight Christmas service this Saturday at 6:00. That church is across from Roper. I would encourage you to go. I think you would really enjoy it. It's hard to believe four years have passed like that. As a trout fishing buddy of mine says, "The days are long, but the years are short," and there's a lot of sense in that. I want to say thank you to the citizens in District Four and all of Walker County for supporting me and giving me the opportunity to represent them. It has been an honor. I feel as though this initial Board of Commissioners has accomplished some great things, such as debt reduction, holding the line on millage rates, and working towards making government more efficient. Like all new concepts, the board had some growing pains, and we did not always agree. But I can honestly say, I respect and appreciate every man sitting at this table, because like me, they all love Walker County. Walker County has been very good to me and my family for a very long time. From my family farming the Old Fortune School down the road, that property, to helping build a courthouse. My mom worked in this building for 30 years, and myself and my brothers were born on the other end of this building. My dad was honored by the county naming Senior Citizens Day after him when he passed away. Rachel and I have made our careers here, and along with my brother Don, continued the family tradition of farming. It's been a privilege to get to work with our county employees, and they do such a great job. I do want to give a few shout-outs. Emily, Courtney, and Bailey with Animal Shelter and Control, you guys did a great job taking care of the animals. Carlin Bowers and Bob Snyder, you guys were always helping me get things done and squared away in D4. Pangilly, job well done. Chief Hodge could not be here tonight, but Chief, I do believe you and your team have built one of the best emergency services department in the state of Georgia.
Amen.
John Persley, we are fortunate to have John. He is very knowledgeable, and he is a real asset to Walker County. And finally, I want to mention Joe Leggie and David Gottlieb. Joe, thanks for all your preparations for our meetings and your professionalism. You did a great job. And David, you were always a great member of the team, and I really appreciate what you did for this board and all of Walker County. Thanks to all of our elected officials for working with this board and making Walker County a great place to live. Thanks to John Culpepper, Randall Pittman, and Alan Slaven for the wonderful work that they did on our Historic Preservation Commission. My final comments are directed solely to a handful of people, a small faction. And these people may find these comments offensive, but they need to be said. I've been asked by many citizens, some that are sitting in this room right now, why these meetings have become so disruptive, almost a circus environment. I attribute that to ignorance, yelling during these meetings, pounding on that podium, and in general, having aggressive and unprofessional behavior. This behavior is so inappropriate for a government business meeting. Might I suggest a course in how to conduct oneself during a business meeting? Next, I want to say I am very proud of Gene Wilson. I am so thankful that he will be sitting in this seat come January. I believe the election for District Four was the most important election in our county. Had Gene lost, the alternative would have been devastating, not only for this board, but for our county. And finally, speaking to the same handful, you never have anything positive to say about Walker County, only negativity. You work to destroy the good in our communities for your own benefit, glory, and fame. Let me tell you something. If you're that unhappy and that disgusted with Walker County, maybe you need to think about relocating to greener pastures. To borrow a line from Merle Haggard, if you don't love it, leave it. Mr. Chairman, back to you one last time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
It has, it's been a great honor to serve over these last eight years. You know, when I come in eight years ago, we had a lot of tough problems to deal with, and, you know, the community really pulled together. I've seen things happen. That's just been amazing. It's been, it's been a great honor, been a great pleasure to go down this journey. I never would have dreamed in my entire life that I would be serving in county government. Just never, ever dreamed it. And I always thought I would always be in the family business, and that's where I would retire. I've been in, was in the family business from the time I was 12 years old and worked every day, loved it, just absolutely loved it. But God had bigger plans. And so, it's been an honor to, to serve. You know, it was great to be a part of the transition from a sole commission form of government to a Board of Commissioners. Have high respect for each one of these men sitting at this table. You know, and one thing that I've shared this with other people, you know, we don't always agree, but when we come and have a conversation here at these meetings, we're all professional, and we all respect each other. But one thing that's very important that I share often is we've never quit talking or communicating when we do disagree. And I see that happen so often in other communities, both in city and county government, where they'll get into a disagreement over something in the community, and they quit talking, they quit communicating, they don't keep working at it. And this board is a great example of a board that never quit talking. We would get frustrated sometimes with each other, but I never doubted one moment that each one of these men had the best intentions and the best foot forward and had their heart in trying to come up with the right decision. But we all come from different backgrounds. We have different experiences. We have different knowledge base, and it takes, takes all of us to come together to hammer things out. And many times, somebody would, you know, we would communicate offline, and somebody would bring up a point of something I didn't know, and vice versa. So, it's a collaboration of everybody working together. And I think, you know, the odds were stacked against this board. When you look at some of the surrounding communities and look at their history of transitioning from a sole commission to a board, they've had some really, really hard times, and they've had a lot of public embarrassment to their citizens and their community by having discord in the board meetings and fussing and fighting and carrying on in public. And, you know, it was a great honor, not maybe a couple of years ago, when I had a citizen come up to me and said, hey, you know, you're our commissioner. And I said, yes. They said, when are we going to transition to that board? But it was so seamless to so many people, they didn't even realize it had happened. And I thought that was a great testimony to this board that we had not been disruptive. We had moved forward and carried our government forward. And so, it's, it's been great. It's been a great journey. I look forward to seeing this county continue and progress. There's a lot of growth and opportunities. There's a lot of people that look at Walker County as one of the best places in the, in the world, and that's what's bringing people here. And so, we have a lot to be thankful for. We have a beautiful community. We've gotten a lot accomplished, but there's still a lot that can be done. The journey is just really starting for this community. You know, we've been in established government for 191 years, and, you know, our community's been through a lot in 191 years. But I'm thankful that I can sit here today in confidence and be able to tell you that Walker County is in the best condition it has been in in 191 years, both with infrastructure, with equipment, with the tools, the trucks, the vehicles, the facilities, and most importantly, financially. We are in the best times of this county in 191, 191-year history. And I feel like if you look around and you look back in history and look at what this county went through during the depression times, during segregation times, all the history and all the things, our county, even though we come into these meetings sometimes and we disagree on how to move forward, but we are living in the best times that this county has ever seen. And I truly believe that that is totally undisputed. We have luxuries and conveniences and things that people before us never had. And to be in a community that only has 16% of the citizens that don't have internet, there's communities all over this country that would give almost anything to be to that point. And over the next four or five years, this county government, in partnership with many of these service providers and having this connectivity plan, I think in the next four or five years, you could see Walker County having a 100% coverage of high-speed internet being provided into this community. And there's going to be grant opportunities, additional grant opportunities out there to help make that happen, because we don't want to have a community that is referred to as the great digital divide. And the great digital divide is those that have internet and those that don't, because our world economy is built around connectivity. And so, it's, it's an honor to be a part of a team and a staff that has the second connectivity plan put together in our entire state of 159 counties. We're the second one to get it done, and they are issuing funding currently through this, what they call the BEAD program, which is another fancy acronym for federal dollars coming to local communities. And so, we are really set up for success to get everyone 100% connected to high-speed internet service. And so, I think that will, over time, history will show that this board has been a part of making that happen to get 100% connectivity for this community. Also, it's been great to serve with David Gottlieb. I lean on him a lot. I've known David for several years, but about five years ago, when I found out that he was interested in being the county attorney, I was shocked. I thought, wow, for us to get someone at David's level and experience and knowledge and his years of practicing law, to come across the street, to leave the Wamack Organization, which is a highly regarded law firm in our, in our city, I was, I was blown away that he would be willing to come into the trenches. And I remember one of our first conversations, because again, we've known each other for a long time, but when he come over and talked to me, he says, what's going to be our biggest challenges as a county government? And without hesitation, I said, without exceptions, potholes and dogs. And he laughed at me.
I haven't changed either.
I don't laugh anymore.
And he found out real quick, and he's talked about this not long ago, you know, we was cutting up about how true that statement was, that potholes and dogs are some of the biggest issues we deal with. So, you know, it's been great serving with David, and I know David's going back into private practice.
Thank you.
But thank you for your service and your time and the long hours, and there's been times that we've talked early in the morning, late at night, weekends, holidays. David's always been available to serve, and he also serves the other elected officials as well.
Oh, yeah.
So, it's not just the people within the commission. The other elected officials, you know, call on his services as well, and also the Development Authority has also called on David. So, thank you for allowing me to serve. I hope you will continue to see that my goal has always been to do the right thing and to work hard and to finish strong, and I will be there to the very last hour. So, no vacation for me other than Christmas Day. We've still got a lot we can get accomplished and get done. And so, I'm there if you need me till midnight at 12:31. And if it's 12:01, you'll need to call Ms. Angie Teens, because I'll be passing the torch, and I know that she will serve and work hard as well. And so, thank you for allowing me to serve and look forward to still seeing our communities prosper and grow. As we move forward through our agenda, and I know it's getting late, but we do have a very, very important need for an executive session. And in consultation with our county attorney, and he agreed with me, as part of my motion to go into executive session, I'm going to need to ask Ms. Angie Teens incoming chair to join us, and also incoming District Commissioner Wilson to also join us in this executive session. It's a very important topic that we need to discuss on some real estate. We have one topic item, but we do need to have a discussion and so we can share some things with you in the executive session with our attorney. So, I make a motion that we go into executive session with the invite of Ms. Teens and Mr. Wilson. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none?
Before we go, is that what you say?
Thank you.
Great job, my friend.
Thank you. I want to do that one more time. Okay, I'll call us back from our executive session. It's still Thursday, December the 19th, 2024. It is 10:21 PM. We have exited our executive session. There's no other further action of this board from the results of our executive session. So, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion from Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Stoltz. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned.
Last one right there.
Last one.